About thirty seconds.
Which one of you guys is going first?
Good evening, welcome to the March ninth, two thousand sixteen, special select board meeting. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will start tonight. It's all gonna be budget tonight, folks. We're gonna start. Anybody have any announcements?
I have select board comments, but I think it would be better, since it's about budgetary process, after the presentations.
Okay. Anybody have any announcements? No comments from select board members?
Hey, there's no residents in here, so I don't think we have any resident comments tonight. Okay, folks, tonight, we're gonna have the director of council on aging, and we're also gonna have the director of parks and recreation. He's gonna give us a briefing on their budget, and we're gonna have a question and answer period. You notice tonight, we do not have Steven Crane here. He's at an event with his daughter tonight. And he's nervous because his people are in here testifying. He's not here, but we'll try to get through this calmly tonight, so. Amy, why don't you go ahead, and you wanna start the way we did last time? We started asking questions instead of having a presentation. You wanna use the same format tonight?
Do you have a presentation?
Okay, who's got the first question for Amy? Rick, go ahead.
Jim Russell was in the other day, saying how wonderful you were with all the grants that you've done. And thank you very much, because grants is really how we're gonna grow the program, and you've shown that this year with your budget. We had to cut things back because of some obligations or requests on the school side. And you have not, your budget that was cut back is now still up there. So I appreciate all the work that you've done in regards to that. And I know there's been a lot of changes in regards to bylaws, so it's not always the numbers that we see, but it's some of the other things that you've done structurally, which I think have added to the efficiency in the department. So thank you on that. I'm gonna ask you a question I've been asking all of them, is all the department heads. I know we have requested you to cut back, and you really did. But often, when we do the cutbacks, it doesn't allow a department to really innovate, provide services in a new and interesting way. And also, cost savings are sometimes held back, because you have to invest in order to save money sometimes. So what is it that you would have liked to start, whether it's a pilot project or something in the department, for better services or for cost savings, that you couldn't do this year because of the cutbacks that were required in your department?
So, due to some of the grant funding, we were able to kind of switch around benefits and all that. But what I, when I first came on board, we're looking at breakfast program, having a cook more hours, and be able to do more ordering, and you know, just more in the kitchen area. Just everybody can't come at eleven thirty, so some people are more in tune to come morning time and get their socialization. So that would be one program, I mean, if I had a wish list. Another is, we have transportation issues, so we have a volunteer driver. It's hard to get, you know, plan regular scheduled events with volunteer drivers. So that would be something in the future. And I'm actually looking for grants through Mass DOT for a handicap accessible van and to pay a driver. But we're, you know, we're innovative in our programs. We've increased numbers. We've increased the amount of programs, so we're doing okay with what we have, you know. But if we had a unlimited pot of money, we could be doing a whole lot more.
I know. One of the things that I understand is there are people here in town who their nutritious meal really comes from the senior center at noon. So if you did expand that, so some of these people could have a second meal of the day, or as you said, some of them who can't stay out till noon, what would the cost be for a breakfast program? Do you have a ballpark figure?
It's probably two dollars a meal.
So are you talking about, is it a ten thousand dollar, a five thousand dollar investment?
It's, you could probably do it with ten thousand dollars.
Ten thousand would allow a, that right now, would you say is your most popular, is meal, meals at noon? Or what do you feel services is most used at the senior center?
I mean, we have, each day is different. We see about a hundred and ten people a day. Average in the dining room is forty-five to fifty. But depending on the day, we have cards is big, but we also have a large pickleball group. It depends on the day what the activities are, but people are enjoying trips. It's just trying to find what exactly people are interested in. But we have a steady nutrition program. It's forty-five to fifty a day. And then there's fifty, fifty-five Meals on Wheels participants, so we're serving that many each day, hundred a day.
And you talked about changing your hours and expanding them. Did you, what time do you open now?
We open at eight. We're open eight to three, and that would be another thing to look at, too. Expanding hours later, I mean.
And right now, on transportation, are you talking about transportation to help bring people to the center? Or actually, transportation for special programs such as the symphony and things like that?
Pioneer Valley provides transportation in the community for people, and it's door-to-door service. But we see gaps. There's, people are hesitant to call and take it. So more of a in-town transportation, that we could pick people up, bring them to the center. We could bring them to doctor's appointments, hair appointments, and just, you know, focus more on this community. PVTA, you gotta, you may make an appointment, and they pick you up at twelve or whatever for your appointment. But then you've gotta, you know, head to Springfield and drop somebody off. You can be on the bus for a while, and we're finding that more and more people are requesting personal drivers. So we have a volunteer driver program.
Okay, thank you.
There's people out there that are still needing transportation.
Just to follow up Amy, as you know, I'm on the PVTA advisory board, and there may be changes to that. And I think, you know, we need to be aware, and it's primarily because of meeting a service level that's set by law. In other words, people at home, the PVTA so-called, they call it their paratransit service. It's really two services in one. It's people for ADA requirements who can't use a regular bus, and they extended it to seniors throughout the Pioneer Valley. And by law, they must meet a certain level of service for the ADA people, and they're falling below that. There are two ways to do that. One is jack up the costs, so they can add in a whole lot more vehicles, or cut back on senior services, which are not required by law, which have been done as an accommodation by the PVTA. And they're still talking about it, still discussing it. It hasn't decided where they're going. And there are at least four different scenarios possible. But many of them include local transportation, and at least one of them includes the PVTA subsidizing, I guess is the best word, the council on aging services in local towns. I know that the folks in East Long Meadow are obviously on this. I assume you stay in touch with them. But if that's critical to you, we need to stay on top of it, because it can have a dramatic impact on the residents of Long Meadow who, and I have the statistics, how many take ADA and how many just take senior services. And they also have looked at what it would be, so I just be aware of that.
Yeah, and then idea that was thrown out there is to work with East Long Meadow and just have a, like a regionalized, just between this area.
So I just had a couple of questions about the budget, and that is that, you know.
Mark, can you back on what we were just talking about, the transportation?
Sure, go ahead.
So one of the, I don't know, obviously, you know, we're talking about the hypothetical, right? But, you know, one thing I was reading about recently is, because different municipalities have looked at using Uber or Uber-type technology.
Yeah, posted something on our Facebook page about it, and that, you wanna finish?
Well, I guess what I was gonna say is, and this is something they're kinda thinking about with, in the Boston area, with the MBTA, of being able to deliver some of these ride services, which they're doing kind of the same thing you're talking about, you know, like an individual ride. And there seems to be, at least the possibility of a public-private partnership, you know, using this kind of technology. I don't know if that's something you guys have thought about.
Yeah, we did think about it, and then till the Uber scandal.
The PVTA has talked about, we've talked about it at the PVTA meetings, too.
We did just post, we're, you know, trying to just educate seniors on Uber and the idea of it. And, you know, it is pretty much like our volunteer program, but, you know, they're not a cashless population yet. You know, you'd have to go on and, you know, set up your account. And so eventually, I think that it would be a great resource.
If I recall correctly, the PVTA's cost are like twenty dollars and forty cents or something in that area per ride. And, well, because they're using homes transportation, and they've got contracts, and they just take their total cost for the year and divide it by the number of rides. And so we say, well, you can get Uber cheaper than that. The problem is, if you do that, everything else goes up. I mean, so you really don't wanna cherry pick. But there was, there is continuing discussions about all kinds of options.
I think in Boston, MBTA pays forty-five dollars a ride.
It takes longer.
Yeah.
Thank you. My, going back, my question about the budget, we'd heard that you have now grants, and I think the number's twenty-something thousand dollars in grant for the kitchen. And I'm just trying to find out where that is in the budget this year, because we didn't have that last year. It was being paid out of a non-town.
Right, well, there was reduction, you'll notice, from what was, or the FY sixteen budget of ten thousand dollars. That was to pay for the contracted cook.
Paul, where am I here?
It's under COA expenses.
Other expenses for the council on aging.
Okay, yeah, it's eight thousand, it's down eight thousand dollars.
It's down eight thousand dollars, because the money was originally put in for FY sixteen for a contracted cook. The grant is now paying for that contracted cook.
But we don't show grant as income and grant as expenses? I mean, it's an expense.
Not here. This is all general fund. This is budgetary stuff. That is a non-budgetary account.
Okay, you're the CFO. I just, I would've.
There's no, there's no grants in here. I mean, a grant for the school department, for example, is not necessarily in here. Circuit breaker is not in here. This is all general fund.
Okay, so when the fire department gets a grant for, you know, self-contained breathing stuff, it's not in here either?
Right, there are two hundred thousand dollars for that self-contained breathing apparatus. It's not shown here.
Okay, so that eight thousand dollars represents a portion of that grant? Is that it?
Right, the grant will now cover that cook.
Right, so is that a three-year grant? Is that?
Yes.
Okay, so it's approximately eight thousand dollars?
Yeah, I think it's higher than that.
It's higher than that.
Right, that.
It's, it's twenty-five thousand dollars a year, but it goes towards some other kitchen.
I mean, just, Paul, just, this is just a philosophical thing. From a, from a control point of view, is that, it almost looks like that's off-the-books kind of accounting, isn't it? We've got separate money, and we're running a separate checking account here for grants that don't show on the budget. I'm not accusing anybody. I'm just saying, how do you, how do we manage that, or we don't? It's managed through the grant.
I mean, I have a, I have a whole other report that could give you all the special revenue accounts of what we've taken in and what we've distributed, but that's a two-page report. Every department just about has that. Green communities is an example, things to that nature. That's the grant money that comes in, it's expended. Safe grant, police get a number of grants, the school has a whole list of grants in special revenue, whether it's the athletic revolving fund, whether it's, you know, before it was the school lunch. Parks and Rec revolving fund is not shown here.
Right, but to the extent that, for example, we'll pick on the fire department, because they're not here today. You know, if they ran a grant that actually paid employees as salaries, you know, or supplemental salaries, wouldn't that at all, you know, so they can, you know, kind of, my terrible analogy would be like the UMass basketball team. They can go and get all the NCA money they want to, and pay their coach extra money, say, don't worry, folks, it doesn't really count. We're not, you know, it's not your money when they're paying the coaches a million dollars.
Well, one, what you would see is, first of all, the rates are set by collective bargaining, so they wouldn't be able to, in essence, pay anyone an extraordinary amount. And what you would see here is the reduction of the amount that the general fund actually has to fund. So if there are twenty-one firefighters, and all of a sudden, the grant came in to fund one firefighter, you would see a reduction in their line item to represent the amount that the general fund had to pay for that one firefighter. But you would, you would not see them lined up side by side in a budgetary report like this. And I think that that's what you're after, to see them side by side.
I just think it's, it'd be interesting to see what we're actually expending in our town departments, not just what we're expending of tax revenue and state revenue.
I will send you that special revenue report, and again, it's gonna have, it's almost two pages of grants. Excuse me.
Sorry.
I'm in trouble. There are two pages. There are two pages of miscellaneous grants and miscellaneous ways that we handle things. Police outside duty is an example. It's not, you will not find it in a general fund or any budgetary account.
But that, I'm okay with that, because they're not working for the town at that point.
Fine.
They're working for someone, anyway, that's fine. I don't need to push the issue. I just didn't understand that that's. I would've thought that specific grants, especially ones that were replacing it.
I think it's important to state, though, we don't have employees that are being granted, there's no grants that are showing salaries of employees.
Not here.
Yes, but I.
But I will say as an example, I mean, you could go down a couple of lines where the board of health director is, and you'll see that there's a salary there for the health director, and you'll see my note in the column. Two percent of her salary, as an example, is paid from grant money. What you only see here, the amount that we need to appropriate, is ninety-eight percent. And that, again, when we do her payroll, we'll have two sources to pay her amount. Ninety-eight percent is gonna come from the general fund. There's a small two percent on the payroll that would come from an outside grant.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Paul. Yeah, I just, I just didn't see where that was. I just had a, I guess my other question was about one of the other changes here, and I'm trying to find it now. Yeah, that there was a, seemed to be a big jump in dues and memberships, like doubling or so over the year. Is that?
Most of our, our memberships are, like, the National Council on Aging and the Mass Council on Aging, they've doubled their memberships. So these are just, yeah.
I mean, it's not a lot of dollar money, but to go up from, you know, twice as much, twice as much seemed to me to be something worth asking.
That's due to National Council on Aging increasing, they're, the both of them doubled.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks for coming here tonight. At first, I felt bad, you know, you took an eight thousand dollar cut, and then I realized that you're actually doing more for the town with less money. So that's good. It's good to understand the grants. And, you know, as far as the transportation with Uber, I know with seniors, a hard thing is getting them to use a credit card online. I mean, they're not really excited about something like that, so that would be a challenge for you. Now, the, you know, earlier in the year, we voted, and actually, you know, Alex and Richard were more behind this. I just supported it, but we increased the amount of money for people who give a hundred hours to the town. We increased that rate. Yeah, the abatement. Did that affect you at all? Did you hear any, get any feedback from folks that they were?
The residents are happy.
Oh, they are?
Yes. And now, that was done, I think, January, or it was, our application process starts in November. We collect all the information and get them on the program to start January first. So the people that heard about that increase, it's gonna take effect this year, but now we have a lot more people coming out of the woodwork, saying, oh, I wanna be, you know, can I have more information on the tax payment program? So come next application cycle, we might have, you know, hopefully, we don't have to do a lottery.
Yeah, well, at least we'll spend the money allotted, instead of it not being spent.
So we do a lot with, we have a lot of volunteers, you know, we call it, you know, professional people, that we just have a good volunteer base that help us with a lot of things that, you know, otherwise staff would be doing.
I guess the other thing is, you know, of course, with Barry here, I have to talk a little about sociology. You know, sociologists, you know, they talk a lot about activity theory, and that, you know, as we retire, you know, our level of activity, we really don't want it to drop off. We wanna maintain it. And I don't know if you have any programs specifically geared towards retired people or people in that process of retiring? You know, that, to make that, with that transition, I know it's not really a budget. It'd be something that, you know, maybe.
So we, we look at, you know, we have shine counselors to help those that are transitioning into retirement and figuring out their benefits, Medicare, and, but then we're trying to find out what those activities are that people want that are just retiring and provide programs, so we seek the feedback. Pickleball's a big one. I actually played for a few minutes today. They were outside. I went to take a video of them. It's on our Facebook page, but I like, try it. So more, people are more active, you know, they're not, they're not the, you know, bingo card-playing that, you know, typically was your senior center ten years ago. It was, you know, you'd walk into a senior center, and you'd hear bingo. We don't, we do have bingo, but they're looking for more.
Yeah.
More.
Well, we always need people to volunteer for committees and boards, and so keep us in mind for that. But other than that, I don't have any other questions about the budget. I mean, it looks like you're kind of level-funded, so.
Again, thank you for coming in. And, you know, I was looking at the GFOA version of your budget, and it was useful to see some of the, you know, good things that you're doing for the seniors. I just wanna understand the hours, just so that I have no doubt about it. So what exactly happens at eight o'clock? I mean, I mean, does the doors open for everybody to come in?
Doors open at eight. Like, today, for instance, we start, we have ARP aides that prepare taxes. They have appointments starting at eight. We have different, depending on the day, every day is different, but we open at eight. There's activities. We have papers and coffee that people could always have, just to come and socialize. But then we have, you know, different programs that start. We have an exercise that starts at eight, so.
Okay. Now, one of the things, when we were looking at this a couple of years ago, there was this phenomenon of people waiting at the door. And, you know, and I do know that, you know, a lot of seniors, you know, tend to be early risers, you know. And, and one of the questions I had back then was, well, what would it take for us to add that hour? I mean, do you see any value in opening at seven? I mean.
That's why, if we had a breakfast program, our cook gets there at seven, and she has to start preparing.
For the lunch?
For Meals on Wheels. It's like two separate, so she, they come in, they do Meals on Wheels, and then they start over and do the lunch, so it's two shifts. But I've spoken to her, and it wouldn't require too much. We would just have to bump up, you know, the delivery of Meals on Wheels to, you know, you're not gonna get your meal till, you know, eleven thirty, between eleven thirty and one thirty, instead of ten forty-five. And then lunch would not be at eleven thirty, it'd be at twelve thirty, enough for her to do three shifts of cooking.
I get you. So what would it, like, the conversation that we had two years ago was, all it would take to increase the, you know, by an hour each day was actually to have the person in your position increase their hours enough.
So that's what we did when I started. So I opened at nine, and when I started, we started opening at eight.
Okay. So if we were to go to seven or seven thirty, what would?
I could get up that early. For a hefty price.
So, Amy, I guess the question, is it just a matter of your salary, or is it like, are there other salaries? Are there other costs associated with it? I mean, that's what I'm asking.
It would be the cook.
So increasing her hours?
Yeah, but she would have to be increased on the other end, just to stay and make somebody's salary in the morning.
Okay, all right. So like, when you were talking about the ten thousand dollars for breakfast, would that, would that include the?
That would be more like the food, the supply, yeah.
Okay, so we would, because obviously, if we're gonna, well, I guess you could have breakfast at eight, but. So to open at seven and have breakfast, like.
Ready by seven thirty.
Yeah, so what would be the kind of, Mark likes to use the term all-in cost. Like, what would be the total cost, you know, plus, you know, with ten thousand plus what?
Ten thousand plus, I need a calculator. Well, you'd have to pay somebody's salary to open in the morning and be there. And then, I mean, I don't know if I wanna say what the cook gets paid out loud, but.
Alex, I wonder if, I wonder if it wouldn't be better for her to get back with us?
Yeah, I can, I can.
Prepared to answer that, were you trying?
No, but I can come up with a, you know, do a spreadsheet on it.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, do something that's reasonable and get back with us. How long would it take, Amy?
I can do it tomorrow.
Okay. Why don't you email, well, email through Stephen to the whole board then?
Okay.
Use an idea, what it would take. Anything else, Alan?
Nope.
Okay. That way, that way you got time to think about with your staff, too, and even with Stephen.
So, yeah, I mean, but we do have things like skiers, I don't know where they go skiing, but they've been skiing twice a week for the last, how many ever weeks? But they, they come, they get the key at eight, they take the van, and so we have things that we start at eight. If they could probably get on the road earlier or something, they could probably benefit from that, too, or have breakfast and then go, or.
Right. Any, any survey data on the breakfast service? Do you have any ongoing service data on there, or how many people would be interested?
We did, I did a dining survey two months ago, and it was a question, so I can tally that up and put it in.
Okay. Do you even come closer and remember how much interest is in?
It was about half.
About half?
Yeah.
I wonder if that's something that would grow once it becomes known? Because you'd be serving breakfast at seven thirty, and the cost would be in the two-dollar range, and anybody could stop.
I had a breakfast program in summers, and it was popular. People are up early.
Eggs, benedict, steak and eggs?
Yes, and some of the, you know, we had some assisted livings that would come and sponsor them and cook there. And so it was a popular thing. People are up early, something to do.
Okay, the, are you seeing, I know you've got your computer system going now. And as long as people log in and tell you what they're doing, do you get good service data? Are you seeing any increases in any programs that, I'm not saying they're alarming, but that you may need to be starting to plan, that you're anticipating a spike that's taking effect?
So we, a lot of our programs are seeing increase. I just did, it's posted in the senior center. So we, a lot of our programs are seeing increase. I just did, it's posted in the senior center, but did an analysis of the dining room from, we were closed last year. But the two thousand fourteen to two thousand sixteen, it's like a hundred and fifty increased meals a month, so.
A month?
A month.
What percentage is that? Do you know, Amy? Any idea?
Between the two.
No, I mean for what it was to what it was. Is it a hundred and fifty percent increase or a hundred and fifty percent?
No, a hundred and fifty meals.
Additional meals.
Additional meals.
So thirty, no, no, it's not by thirty, it's by what, twenty-five days or?
It, we were open, it was the exact same days. It was like, yeah, twenty-two days. There was two holidays and a snow day in two thousand fourteen and this year. So it was the same amount of days, but we, we served.
I had the opportunity to get out there and have a meal once a month with veterans.
Oh, is it?
Veterans. The meals are fantastic. I mean, for the price, you, there's just absolutely no way that you could beat it. They're home-cooked meals.
Yep.
And they're served. I mean, it's, it's a wonderful, and there's dessert and drink and everything else. It's a wonderful opportunity.
So our computer system has been a lifesaver with staff, you know. We were taking handwritten sheets and having to input them all. But if people swipe in and we're capturing a lot more.
And Marie had pretty well hit you up on the, if you had extra money, what you would do. So I won't have to ask that, so. Any other questions for Amy?
I have a new senior center, I know that.
I've just, I've been kind of focusing on finances. People are asking service questions. I just have a quick service question. One of the services, I just have questions about the pantry and, and if you've seen a, you know, and I know I don't need to know, you know, confidential information. But do you measure it in pounds of food that go out or number, do you have any numbers like that to share, share with the community? And do you separate fresh produce from frozen, from the cans and donations or something like that?
Yep. So our pantry, we've extended our hours. We're open two days a week now rather than one. And if I can, each week we see about twenty people, twenty individuals a week. There, our outreach worker has been working with each one to make sure that we have gone through to make sure that they qualify for other programs. You know, if they didn't have SNAP, they're, they filled out applications and so they're getting other resources. We, you know, we don't want people reliant on, we're trying to get themselves sufficient. So may not happen with seniors who are on the fixed income, but under seniors. But as far as the pounds, I don't have it here.
Fine. I, I'm just trying to get a, I was trying to get a sense of, because I remember we used to do that, it was Thanksgiving Day.
Yeah, the basket. So it's usually probably about fifteen, twenty pounds a week. I worked the pantry last week. And we have a scale that talks back. And average with people were, you know, fifteen, you know, fifteen pounds, twenty pounds.
Are you able to tie into any major department stores for donations on that, like Costco's and stuff like that?
We've done food drives locally. Big Y is wonderful to us. We get food donations every Monday from Big Y.
Okay.
We've done food drives at Armadas and they've been wonderful.
Armadas is a good partner too, aren't they?
Yeah.
Now, you get baked goods and all in from...
Yeah, so Big Y will give us bread, cookies, donuts, like healthy food.
Yeah, healthy food.
And then summertime, the farmer's market gives us all their food that doesn't go at the farmer's market. So that's all fresh produce that comes to us.
Can we still go up to the cooperative or wherever, where, what was it, Hadley or some, Western Mass, whatever?
Yes. Yep. We just had a big, we picked up seven hundred pounds of food today from the Western Mass Food Bank.
How is the food bank doing now? How are donations?
Donations are good. They, they're cyclical. During the holiday months, it's much higher. But we have two new volunteers that are going to be doing continuous food drives. So they'll, you know, we'll constantly have something at Armadas and Big Y. And they'll, they'll be responsible for picking it up, bringing it back, but more of a constant presence.
Yeah.
And then working with the schools, the different groups at the schools that do drives for us and make it an all-year thing rather. A lot of people give it Thanksgiving and the, you know, holidays. So we need it all year long.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Amy? Amy, thank you.
Thank you.
Check's in the mail.
Okay. We'll negotiate from seven AM.
Ms. Jarvis? And for those that don't know you, could you introduce yourself?
I can. I'm Barry Jarvis and I'm the Director of Parks and Recreation.
Okay. Marie?
Thank you. And especially for your work this year at a tough budget year, I see that a decrease for you, actually substantially large decrease, and it's related to the daycare.
The daycare salaries.
Daycare salaries. And I guess I'm going to ask what, if you had a wish list and we weren't in this tough budget season, what would be really the best bang for our buck for investment in Parks and Recs?
When you asked Amy, I started thinking about that and actually kind of going back to the conversation you were having earlier about special revenue funds. We're very lucky, number one, that the town appropriates anything to Parks and Recreation. And two, that, excuse me, we have, we have a revolving fund where most of our program revenue and expenses come from. So when we do have ideas that either come from reven, residents or opportunities, we can usually pull from there. That's really where our revenue mix is primarily is in, in the revolving account. So we have, we have grants, not many. We have more substantial donations. But the biggest piece of our revenue mix with the revolving account are user fees. And we have that to pull from when we have ideas.
But is there any program out there you would love to see develop in the next year or two?
We, we do. I mean, we have, I think, it's not cost prohibitive at this time and I think we're lucky that it's not. Because again, we can make it happen through the revolving fund. We look at trends. We realized that, I mean, every budget process, we initiate with a SWOT analysis. So we go through and we look at what we're doing well.
Okay.
And then we look at what we're not doing well, all based on different factors. We do program evaluations after all our programs. So we have feedback from our participants and prospective participants that might come in for a passport and then give us feedback. And one of the areas that we seem to not have a lot of programming in is tween boys. So boys that are the ten, eleven, twelve age that perhaps don't necessarily like athletics and we don't offer a lot. So we immediately started looking at that. Once we got that piece of feedback, a few times in a row, we looked at that. So that's an area that we're exploring that I wouldn't be surprised by summer if you see something.
Well, that's fabulous. I didn't know you did that constant, like you said, SWOT analysis and evaluation for programs. That's really fabulous that you do that.
It's important to us. I think we need to know where we stand. Trends change and we're really a department that is based on what people want to do, not what they have to do. And a lot of our services, there's other options perhaps for people to go. So it's important for us to know what people expect, what they like, what they wish we had in town. And then it's our job to figure out how to do it.
And one of the things that we used to have, we don't have anymore, is that fish derby. And I was hearing that one of the problems is that Laurel Pond needs to be, what is it called?
To dread, dredge. That's not actually why we stopped. It is true. That's a two-part, yes, it is in the queue to, to have that work done. And I know that's on the radar of the DPW. It was a funding issue. It was an event that we needed sponsorship to execute. Believe it or not, it was really costly to do that. And anytime you do free events, if you don't have a revenue source for them, someone has to pay for it. And we were absorbing it within the department and then we tried having sponsorships. And then kind of coupled with the fact that participation in that was dwindling, we stopped. But it's funny you say that because that's one of the things that's actually back on our radar. We're working separately with the Division of Fisheries and Wildlife to maybe do an education program, but the fishing derby resurfaced. So I, I wouldn't again be surprised if that resurfaces.
And what's the cost of that? You said you had trouble...
It was a few thousand dollars. There's, there's a permit process to stock the pond, buying the fish. The liberation permit didn't cost anything, but the price associated with it and then staffing it or having volunteers. That's, and of course, we can look at different tiers to an event like that. Maybe it doesn't have to be what we did in the past. Maybe it's different. But that's, that's what we were accustomed to dealing with.
Well, comment, you said tween boys and what they like. And one of the things we don't have in town is coding clubs or coding classes. I know that some of the young people I've talked about, they said they've missed that. So if Parks and Rec could come up with programs like that, I'm sure it'd get quite popular.
That's great. Thank you.
Thanks.
Barry, I guess I'll start off by, what a difference a year or two makes particularly in your revolving fund. And, you know, I think people need to understand that. We went from a position of having a revolving fund that was decreasing every year to one that's certainly recovered and is stable, if not better than stable. So you deserve some credit for that. And I guess one of the, you know, one of the other areas is the Greenwood Center daycare. And that's also turned around dramatically. And the question is, how do you see that? You know, and that's as, as good as the next population of that age group. How do you see that? Because it does impact your budget, your revolving fund so much.
Yeah, I think daycare's trendy. And we always looked at the census because that's really how we can project how many children we have. And historically, when we started the daycare, we set thresholds for each classroom and decided how many children we'd have in each classroom. And that dictated our staffing and our space and our licensing capacity. And we did have a couple of really tough years where we just, we saw other daycares opening in the area. We lost children, children aged out. The economy was poor. Parents weren't working. They, they're not working. They, they don't need us and certainly, you know, disposable income wasn't being used for half-day daycare, actually full-day daycare. So we, we made considerable modifications to the program. We started accepting half-day preschool, which is something we didn't do before. And that was probably one of the best decisions that we made. So many people want half-day options. And we didn't for a while. We were concerned about staffing patterns. There's logistics within the class, within the classrooms that we had to look at, but it's been very successful. We also, within the infant toddler room, we decided to cap enrollment in the infant room. There's different ratios based on state mandates for different classrooms. And it's a very small ratio in the infant room. So we decided to cap the enrollment in that room. So we, it's, it's a catch-22. We're not taking new infants, but it's pretty stable. And then with the preschool, we actually changed the threshold age to enter into the preschool. One of the drawbacks is we have, you know, up to nineteen kids in diapers with two staff and no one likes that and no one, no matter who you are and how wonderful you are. But it's been cost-effective. So now we have, for those of you that don't know, we have four classrooms and three of them now have wait lists to get in, which is a great problem to have. So stabilized.
One, and this somewhat piggybacks on, on Marie's questions, a lot of the programs that are run through Parks and Rec are a fee-for-service basis. And the fee is intended to, you know, I guess compensate or reimburse for the, the cost of running the program. Are there programs that fall into that category that really ought to be subsidized by the town that we just don't think about it because we don't have the money to subsidize it?
You do and I thank you. The pools are a great example of that. They're, we are completely reliant on the DPW for the operation of the pool. They handle all our mechanics. Same thing with the buildings. So thank you for that. You, you do subsidize those. But I think what we try to do within the revolving account itself, we have different compartments within the structure of the revolving account. So we have an aquatics line, a tennis line, sport camps, day camps, and there's about eleven of them. And we know that aquatics loses money, but we also know that day camps make money. So we try to keep it in-house within the revolving account and allow those facets to subsidize each other without having to ask for additional funding from the town.
I guess what my more specific question, Barry, would have been, you know, if somebody said, you know, there's money to subsidize some program, would you give some thought to, gee, yeah, even within that, maybe we ought to subsidize the, the aquatics or the, whatever it is? So that, it's not a good choice, loses a little bit more money, but we're covering it through a subsidy because it'll attract a whole lot more people. And I'm not suggesting we even know how, I even know how to do that, but...
We try to be entrepreneurs and figure it out ourselves, but I, I would not, I think I, I get your point. I, I would never lose an opportunity because we didn't have funding to do it. If I felt like there was a public interest, I would ask you for money to try to figure it out and offer, at least to start it and then figure out a way to fund it after.
Thanks.
Okay, Mark or Alex?
Yeah, I just had, um...
You're breaking up my order. See, I go to the end and my order's...
I thought we were going left to right.
Oh, no, that's okay. Go. I just kept the rhythm down.
So, no, thank you. Yeah, I really, you know, I know you do a good job and as far as, so most of these programs, your goal is to, you know, earn enough to cover all your costs. And, and there's no way to really show that on here.
We show it internally. We keep internal records. We, we have MUNIS, which is the town's accounting system. But as a staff, I think we're overprotective. So we also use QuickBooks and then translate them into Excel. And then, then that's based on MUNIS numbers. So we have all kind of, all sorts of internal accounting. So we do have it. Doesn't always get to your level. It definitely always goes to Paul and Steven every month so they know.
I guess it would just get to our level if you were losing a lot of money.
It was a problem. Yeah, and I'd hate for that, but, yeah.
Now, I would imagine that, you know, you used to have the ski program and this year without much snow, I mean, have you, have you still doing the ski downhill skiing?
No, the schools, I think, like many things, they took over that, I believe, within the middle schools. So that was something that we used to do. And, and I feel like that's a common trend in this area that ski clubs are run through PTOs in schools. So that is, that is normal. We did that in my town and, yeah, we had a rough year, but they went to Basque, which I think is where the seniors go. And, and that's very common for school departments, PTOs, not school departments to, to offer that. So as long as the needs being met, I think, that's a good thing.
Yeah, and the tweens, I mean, it's, it's kind of sad, you know, you talk about coding and I know the computer games and, and when you think about a recreation department, I mean, there's really...
Yeah, that's our philosophy. It's, I mean, you know, we're interesting because I feel like leisure is a component of recreation and recreation, active recreation, that doesn't resonate with everyone. So it's, it's leisure and recreation really. And there are activities that, and we, we consider that too. Because there, there are activities that we offer that are instructional. They're not all physical. Some are very intellectual. But I wrote that down when you said that. So that, that could be something. But some things don't, are consistent.
Chess club, do you have chess club for kids?
The library does chess club.
The library does, okay, all right, yeah.
We have lots of people that, that offer different types of, of activities, so.
Well, you know, I have four children and whenever they get a chance, they always want to go rock climbing, indoor rock climbing, well, outdoor too. But they have to drive all the way up to Hadley, you know.
From Northampton.
But I know the school, you know, is, they were talking about putting a, a climbing wall in. And, and I don't know if that would, you know, if that would phase in with your department too. Because I know there are a lot of places where they have, you know, they hire some kid to, to run the climbing and off-hours and it, it can be cost-effective. And, and so we could save kids from taking long drives, but we also could have a resource that's, you know, local. So, you know, I don't know.
Absolutely. If, if they build it, we will program it. The schools have been very generous in that sense and we do utilize the school resources. We have done SCUBA, which is interestingly popular with people that want to be certified when they go on vacation in the winter. popular with people that want to be certified when they go on vacation in the winter for cruises, or to, you know, the Caribbean. And we've utilized the high school pool in the winter to do that. But I think climbing walls are definitely trending, and kind of a soft adventure component, where it's not really dangerous, but adventurous. And when you mentioned before, the population of people that are just kind of bridging retirement, we see that as a trend, that people are interested in kind of that soft adventure component. Again, not everyone likes the physical aspects, but that's always, that's a good programming area.
Yeah. All right. That's about it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you for coming in. I know personally about all the good work that's being done in the Parks and Rec Department. I just had a couple of questions. One was, could you talk about the, you know, I'm looking at the budget and personnel, you know, there's no longer kindergarten coordinator because we don't have a kindergarten program. What is that, what impact does that have on the overall program?
Financially, very positive, because what had happened over the years, as the population of students was dwindling, our numbers were dwindling, but we still had to have that full-time person, because we had children that were morning kindergarten and then afternoon kindergarten. So we needed that person. So we have not seen a negative impact. It's full-day kindergarten, which seems to be beneficial overall to the town. And then we still get those children in either before school or after school. So we still see them, but-
So, you haven't heard a clamor for people who are in the preschool that want to keep going with it?
No, because we, they understand that once they age out of our program, they're going to full-day kindergarten. And then we see them. We'll either, we'll either have them in before school or in after school. So we still get to service the parents, the working parents that need us.
Now, and how much of the kids that are in preschool or daycare are in Long Meadow versus other towns?
Most of them. We just looked at that, actually. I would say probably eighty-five percent are Long Meadow residents. And then the majority of the non-residents work in area businesses such as Mass Mutual, so it's convenient for them.
Sure.
Or they're town employees, Alex. I'm sorry, that's another facet, too. Or they're town employees.
Sure. Now, I noticed on the budget that you had requested three hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars for daycare salaries, and then the recommended is three hundred thousand. Could you talk about what that difference is?
Sure. When I had asked, when I had done the first appropriation, there were a couple of variables we were thinking about at the time. One of them was a wage study for the daycare staff. The daycare appropriation is made, and it's always paid back, but initially it's borrowed from the town. So it's technically, it's general fund money. And we, over the last year, have had difficulty with staff that have left. I mean, we're lucky, we have a lot of tenure in the daycare staff. We had three long-term staff members leave. And it was tough to replace them. And one of the things that we considered was, well, we don't pay really well. And we don't comparatively. And looking at minimum wage and looking at the trend, even though we were exempt from that, it's still a draw. So what we were hoping to do initially was to do a very large wage study within the daycare, and then modify staffing if needed.
And when you say wage study, you mean salary increase?
Yeah, and looking, but what has happened since the initial appropriation and the cut is we filled those positions. We were able to hire people at lower salaries. So it's not an impact, a negative impact as negative. The only thing we wouldn't be able to do at this time was do a full-fledged wage study. We might have to put it off a year, which is perfectly acceptable.
And you were talking about having waitlists. And I take it, this is not the infant room you're talking about. You're talking about, like, between-
It is. The infant, the toddler, and the, one of the preschool rooms.
Okay.
Because we capped, we capped the infant room, so to avoid hiring another staff. So we do have a waitlist. And that one's tricky, because people are expecting, half these children aren't born yet, and we're still looking, and-
What are you capped at in the infant-
We're capped at three. It's a three-to-one ratio, or seven-to-two.
So you have one staff member?
We have one staff.
You know, typically, that's the thing that people most want, like, because it's the hardest thing to find.
It is, yeah.
And in terms of, I don't know, did you have problems in years past filling up the infant room?
Yes, we've gone through years where we've had waitlists with seven children in the room. And then we've had years where we've had trouble. And then we implemented that part-time component, not in the infant room, but in the other room. So we've actually considered, we had considered prior to it filling, should we look at part-time infant care? There's, that becomes problematic with sharing cribs and things like that. But you're right, very few people do infant care. The cost analysis of running the infant room, that is where, looking at it as a profit center, we make the least amount of money because of the low ratio. We make the most money in the preschool rooms where the ratio is ten children to a staff. That's a great financial opportunity, so.
Yeah, okay. So I guess, and I guess the problem is that you can't charge that much more for the infants than the other kids.
Right. We do charge more. I mean, we're over three hundred and thirty dollars a week in infant care.
Yeah, but not so much that it would even out in terms of cost?
Yeah. I mean, the pricing structure, I think we're pretty much where we should be in terms of our facility. There are daycare centers that offer infant care that have brand-new facilities that we know we're competing against. So we're trying to be cognizant of that, but also balance it out.
Now, and do you still go from seven to six?
Yes.
Okay. Because that's a real draw, you know, because, I'll tell you, from experience, you know, when you have a home daycare situation, and your person is sick, that's your problem.
Right.
If somebody is sick, that's your problem, you know, so-
I'm in the infant room when I have kids, or someone is, yes.
Yeah, yeah. So that's good for parents. I guess the last thing I'll say is, I'm not in favor of coding. I think kids are in front of the computer way too much these days. And I like more, you know, outdoor time. But that's me, so.
We are, kind of not really coding, but the geocaching, we're actually implementing that in Laurel. And we're working on something with a resident to do that. That's really neat.
Yeah, that's good.
So when we launch that, we'll make sure everyone knows, so we can get people on board.
Did you have something, Paul?
I was just going to say, when it comes to the infants, it gets to be, I don't say risky business, because the ratios are so small, three-to-one, that as soon as you get that fourth one in there, you have to hire the teacher. And then you're in a losing proposition. Maybe when you're at five, you might be breaking even. And with that enrollment so tight, it's, you know, I don't say it's risky business, but there's a chance of losing money, a greater chance of losing money with those ratios of three-to-one, or seven-to-two, whichever.
And that was part of FY13 and FY14 failures. A small, small bit of that could be attributed to, to that exact situation.
See, I think part of the problem we run into is that, when my first daughter was born, we were in Washington DC. And, I mean, the waitlist of every single infant, you know, it was crazy. Boston's like that. I was shocked, you know, when I actually spoke to the daycare director, you know, years ago. And like, yeah, sure, come on in, you know. And I'm like, wow, this is pretty good, you know. But I think we have a different market here in Western Mass than you do in these big cities. So I don't know if you're ever going to get to the point where you have huge waiting lists, so that you can be sure that you'd be able to fill every spot.
A lot of our infants, they're not born yet. People change their mind. We understand they're shopping around. People's circumstances change. Some people, you know, mothers might have their children and decide they're not going to need daycare at all. And we've been burned, and we're just, and we really, we did put, we were thoughtful about that particular situation. Because we thought, you know, our plan B, we could, we have an infant and toddler room. You can create what is called a wobbler room, and mix them together. That could be potentially a safety net, but then there's issues. So we're very thoughtful. And not to say that I won't tell you next year, guess what, select board, we opened it up, and we, but I think for now and for this fiscal year, we're probably going to be very conservative, given the history over the past two years. We finally, we're in a very good spot right now.
Now, do families have to put a deposit down? Would that be anything?
They do. We've been, we tour quite a bit, almost on a daily basis, mostly with the preschool. They come in, if they commit, they do put a non-refundable deposit down. And we've kept lots of people's deposits that have changed their mind. It's just, it's the nature of the business. We run it like a business. So we have to do that, but, but they do. Same with before and after school. That's consistent practice with that.
Any other questions? Marie?
I wanted to go back to something that I didn't think of asking you before. And that is, if for some reason the whole building became available, would you be able to use it?
We would program that building. And if you'd like, I can start working on ideas.
Okay.
We do as a staff. We, actually, you know, when you, I took your phrasing of your initial question as financial. But space is something that, unfortunately, it's gym space. And we work with a lot of departments. Amy and I work together all the time. We try to program our facility. But we always run out of space at some point. So we would definitely, we would present something to you.
And gym space, from my understanding, is a problem throughout the town. So you could even use a second gym, and-
Different seasons. I would say during basketball season, it's impossible to find gym space for anything, because we program it. We offer, we do very little in the way of adult programming, but we do run coed volleyball, men's volleyball, senior volleyball, and basketball. And then everything else is for the youth, as far as indoor sports. So it's for four months out of the year, gym space is at a premium. And then the school gyms after school, I think there's an opportunity. But it's usually when people can't get outside that they want the gyms. So that's, and that's common in every town. That's not specific to us, I don't think.
And then on the budget, I saw fifteen hundred dollars for landscaping. What is that? Is that plantings, like flowers?
It has been in the past. It, last year, it went to mulch at Greenwood. The DPW is very generous with us in terms of providing whatever we need. We have the playground at Bliss Park, we have the playground at Greenwood Park. But we also, for the daycare, specifically around the back, we have our own playground. And because it's licensed through the state, we have to have specific mulch, and the fall zones have to be, you know, a certain length. And that usually, it's the end of the fiscal year when we need to replenish. So in the past, we've used it for that. We've used it for different sites that I don't want to say beautification, but perhaps sites that we've come up short with. But we do wind up using it every year. And it's usually in partnership with DPW for a mutual project.
But you really don't have garden, like flowers and things like that? You, a line item to allow you to buy?
No, we do it through the daycare. We have a couple different things at the daycare, and we run it through the operating budget for the daycare.
They do. And then a comment on another source of possible program is grandparents, because we were talking about aging and retirement, and grandparents and grandchildren would be nice to see something.
What'd you look at me for when you said that?
No, because you were talking about age, different-
You shouldn't get past me. Look right straight at me.
Well, you and I both have grandchildren, so.
Yes, we do.
You know what we've done, and it's been successful, and it's something that maybe it was just cyclical, and it didn't work well for a while, but it did, is along those lines, a lot of grandparents find themselves as caregivers to their grandchildren. And we ran first aid and CPR. I mean, obviously grandparents know how to take care of the children.
Yeah.
But they get nervous being back in, you know, in charge of that. And that used to be very successful.
And then the hot button issue is field space? Okay. Is there any that you would say is your top priority and missing? Whether, are we talking soccer fields? Are we talking baseball diamonds, Little League diamonds, or are you just saying everything?
Why don't we hold a little bit on that? Because she's currently working with Stephen to bring out a report.
Oh, you are?
Yeah.
Yeah, we've actually, in light of every discussion that's going on in town now, we, and we really have tried to keep, we had an inventory, we've always had an inventory of our fields. But I think, looking at how we use them, and, you know, if availability were to change, what we would do, where we would do it, what opportunities. I mean, we always think we're on top of that. But involving more the stakeholders, we're getting more information. But Stephen and I talk all the time about that.
Because Stephen, Stephen will be back before the board. He's working it up with Barry as we speak. And I had that as a note, too. I wanted to let the board know that there is an effort behind the scenes taking place right now.
Absolutely. I mean, we talk all the time.
Okay. You have anything else, Marie?
No, that was it.
So could you talk about what the gyms used for?
At Greenwood?
Yes, please.
Sure. We use it for the daycare, for, you know, physical education. We use it for pickleball. I say "we," I mean Amy, but we, she left, oh, she's still here, all the time. And they'd use it 24/7 if they could. We give it to Willie Ross, one of our community partners. They're a school down the street. They don't have a gym. They come in Monday through Friday and use it. We program it in the evenings for programs like basketball, one of the programs I mentioned, the volleyball. We use it for special events, the town flu clinics. We use them for the big ones that we do in the, in the fall season. We've had in the past teen programming, so teen center, we've had there in the past.
Teen center was-
Grade six, seven, and eight. And it's Friday nights. We actually, we took a break from that this year. That was a cost-cutting measure to, to not hold it this year, because the expenses exceeded the revenue. What else do we use it for? The after-school program uses it. We use it for certain trainings. When school is not in session, we typically have double or triple the children we normally have. So we program it, for example, February vacation, April vacation, no school days. When it's a holiday that Greenwood is open, and most holidays Greenwood is still open, because parents still work.
And what about your day camps during the summer?
And the day camps, all summer we use it.
So like, coming back to the after-school program, I mean, is that where the kids are mostly, in the gym?
That's where they elect to be. They, the system, when they arrive to Greenwood from their school, they blow off steam for twenty minutes, either outside or in the gym. They go to snack, and then they have choices. So they can choose to do homework, which you can imagine, most of them don't. They can choose a special activity, which could be an art activity or the gym. So the gym has tons of children every afternoon, because the children get the choice to pick where they go.
If you were to lose that, I mean, what would be the option?
It would have to be replaced somewhere else, I would think. Or a comparable space.
That's all I have.
Okay. The pools, we've got two pools in town. And I know she said you were losing money on the aquatics.
That's pretty standard.
Okay. We're getting ready to spend close to three hundred thousand dollars on one of the pools.
Yes.
Is that a good investment for us to make?
Very good investment.
And why would that be?
Because our town's people love both of our swimming pools. They're public assets. We use them, we program them every day that they're in operation. We have hundreds of people at both pools. And with the pools, that's just, that's one of the downfalls, I think, is that maintenance, unlike other things, is very expensive in pools. And we made, not a similar investment, but another investment at the Reynolds Pool years ago when we replaced the filter system. It used to be a cartridge system, which, if anyone has a spa, it's great for spas, but thousands of those cartridges in a three-hundred-thousand-gallon pool wasn't efficient, so.
I guess what I don't understand, Barry, is if they're that busy, why are we losing money on them?
Because we are solely reliant on user fees. So we can't charge residents three hundred dollars a season for the pool. We have to staff them. So the expenses exceed what we take in for revenue, because it's user fees only.
Okay. How many, how many people, do you know how many people use the pools?
On a daily basis? I mean, it varies, hundreds. We program from nine in the morning until sometimes ten o'clock at night. Different, the different, two pools have different functions. Greenwood Pool, you see more of the public swim lessons, and the day camps, family swim, laps.
And there's usage that would exceed one pool's usage?
I believe so.
Because, what, they're less than a mile and a half apart?
But our licensing capacity for the Department of Public Health, I believe, is a hundred and fifty or two hundred.
Of course, you'd control that. I mean, like, you'd control all your other programs. I was just wondering for the, because I know that's up for fairly large expenditure. And when you say that you're losing money on the program, it starts to make you ask, why do we have two pools?
When I said we lose money, what we're not factoring in, which we could, and when I said pools lose money, municipal pools do, again, because there's no other revenue source other than the user fees. I don't attribute back revenue from- I don't attribute back revenue from the day camps or the sport camps, who both use that. So if I were to itemize and, and essentially rent the pool from one of my programs to the other, I suppose that revenue could be put back.
Now, when you say we're losing money, are you talking about that your division's losing money?
We're not as a whole losing money, but I do segment the different areas for accounting purposes. And with the aquatics line, and I can actually tell you.
No, I, I don't need details. It was just general questioning.
Thirty-two thousand? I, I mean, I figure about forty a year. But again, I don't tri- attribute back revenue from the day camps or the sport camps that one of the draws for those programs is to use the pools. So.
I'm more keyed in on your thing when you said we're losing money, but when you said that, that's why it prompted me to ask about.
We're not literally losing money. I feel like, because I segment out my program areas, that if I isolate aquatics and don't attribute back any of the user fees from other groups that use the pool, and if it stands alone, it looks like it's in the red.
Do they use it for something other than swimming?
We use it for training. We use that, we rent it for parties when it's open. It's difficult to find time when it swims.
You're fairly short opening, too, aren't we?
I think in New England, yes, I think.
Yeah, it's a fairly short period.
It's, it's about twelve weeks.
Yeah, that's fair. Okay.
So Barry, I mean, just to kind of give you a sense of this. So, you know, my kids have gone to Pantusco Soccer Camp. Now, one of the big draws of that is that in the afternoon, they get to go to the pool.
Yeah.
So, you know, it, it's just, you know, to, to be out in the hot sun for six hours a day, you know, and, you know, playing soccer isn't really feasible. And so I think if you were to lose that pool segment of it, you'd have people, fewer people going to the soccer camp.
It would be a trickle-down. And, and sport camps, again, according to isolated records, make about forty thousand a year. Day camps, the same thing. So the revolving account isn't losing anything, but looking at them very isolated. And we can say the same of tennis in past years because it costs more money to operate the tennis lessons than we were taking in in user fees.
So like, if you were to allocate some, for example, like, if you were to allocate some of the revenue you were getting from soccer camp?
Right.
And to put it toward the pool?
If I build myself in one area and put in another, it would be even.
Because that's part of what you're selling.
Correct.
Is the access to that pool.
You run your kids by my house after soccer games. I hose them down.
Hose them down? Hey, hey, uh, any, any, well, you, you might see us over there.
Hundred and fifty a month for a season, too.
Okay, there you go. There you go.
Maureen, do you have something?
Yeah, in regards to the pool, have we ever, I know, ever thought of licensing the catering section, or even just for ice cream, and not just cooking, or renting chairs, some other way?
Renting chairs, yes. We do sell concessions, and it's a good portion of our revenue mix at the pools. We sell concessions, we sell ice cream. But chairs, yes. I don't think we've been in a financial position to invest the capital in whatever the chairs would cost. Swim diapers, we've tried.
So how much would you need for chairs and umbrellas and an initial investment?
I'm not sure. To give a thoughtful answer, I don't, I don't have it off, off my head.
Yeah, if you could let me know, because I've always been interested, because seeing everyone having to go, especially the seniors, and have a towel or carry their chairs.
And bring your chair, and it's uncomfortable.
It is really hard.
Yeah, actually, it's amazing the number of people say, well, I, I go, you know, I go to Twin Hills because I don't want to bring my chair.
Yeah.
You know? See, I, actually, I don't mind bringing the chair because the, the pool is a heck of a deal, you know, compared to all the other options, so I'll take that on myself. But I think some people, it does influence.
Yeah.
Does anybody have any other questions for either Amy or Parks and Recreation Director tonight?
Well, Barry, thanks for coming in. Barry?
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you guys coming in. It was a good briefing.
Thank you.
Tell Stephen it went well.
Oh, he's already texted all of us, I'm sure. Yeah.
I wish I could cut camera coverage and just take it all off, but anyway. No, I appreciate you guys coming in, and I don't, was there any follow-up required? There was one thing, uh, the, which you'll be back on the fields anyway, so we'll know about that when that report is done with Stephen.
And the, the cost of the chairs, how much you would really need in capital?
Is it okay if I get it to Stephen?
Oh, yeah, definitely. Yeah, not from you directly.
Yeah, as long as you tell Stephen to pass it on to Maureen.
Sure.
Because he won't know what to do with it.
No, I would. I would, I would ask him to.
Was there anything else anybody think of that was requested? Okay. Well, you guys are.
Thank you.
Thank you for the briefing, and you can go home if you'd like. Mr. Prsturzic is, uh, you gonna sit at your relaxing table?
I'm very comfortable.
It's far away, close to the door.
I guess, Paul, that you were gonna brief us on the library operations and that kind of stuff?
Sounds familiar, huh?
Maybe you weren't gonna brief us on the library.
I wasn't gonna brief you.
I, I, I remember now, yeah, there was some conversation about the library agreement, but I didn't, I have not done anything. I completely forgot about it.
Why don't we just see, why don't we see where it goes and see if you can shape and?
There's nothing in the library budget that's changed other than personnel costs.
I, I, I think one of the questions was, and I think Stephen was working on it, if the Board of Directors had, had looked at the budget. And I know Stephen had made communication with, I don't know, whether it was Karen or one of the board members, and I don't know what the answer is. Um, whether he has heard back from them or not.
Should we text him? Because he seems to be active.
No, no.
He, he, he might miss his daughter's solo.
He's a nervous father. Uh, can anybody think of any questions? They do have, uh, of library operations?
Well, I, actually, I do. I mean, so, I mean, the idea of, like, physical books, you know, we're getting away from that. I don't know if.
I don't believe so. I, I mean, I, I think there's probably some trend of.
Well, I'm speaking generally.
Yeah, I, I think there's some trend of more media.
Right, right.
Type things, but I don't believe that, I mean, I believe they are still buying a good number of, of hardcover books.
And, I mean, are, are people taking them out as much? I mean, and again, this is just a question. I'm not asking, you may not know, but.
I'm, I'm guessing that they're, because I know they do keep count of the, uh, not necessarily the residents, but the people, whether they're residents or non-residents, of the attendance, and what I recall hearing is that it's not going down.
Yeah, that's, we get in those monthly reports, we get it's not going down.
Right.
Now they're going up?
Or is it the number?
They just say the number of people walking in the room.
Number of people walking in.
They don't, I don't know that they count.
I mean, the reason why I say this, like, I, you know, I'm like one of the latest adopters of technology, and I've gotten to the point where I read almost all my books on a Kindle. You know, and, and I just kind of wonder what the future is of physical books.
But in fact, you can download them at the library. I mean, our library.
Right, you'd be able to download them?
I don't know, lends Kindle books.
Right.
So, you know, there's still.
And I don't know. I mean.
So there's still a function of the library to do that, Alex.
No, I think that's wonderful. I mean, but, I mean, I guess the question is, what is the usage? You know, I mean, do we have a lot of books that are sitting on shelves?
Yeah, I, I would assume that they have those, but I, I, I am unaware of what those statistics are.
Okay, great.
And there's a lot of programs, almost like Parks and Rec programs, that they're, they seem to be doing all different age groups there that really have nothing to do with borrowing books, like you said. It's amazing.
The program I have to cancel now because there's a new select program.
Ten minutes amount of program. I mean, even, it's sewing programs for young people in the, on the weekends. It's a phenomenal amount of programs.
Were you gonna ask, continue about the library if we moved to other departments, too?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, does anybody else have any questions on the library? Which department you want to talk about, Maureen?
What I'd like to do is just go to administration and, and, Paul, your, your stuff that you do, but I'd also like to potentially include sanitation, recycling, because I don't think that was, we covered that really in DPW. Maybe we should have.
You ready to start firing questions at Mr. Paul?
I don't have a whole lot of questions about the, I guess, the Department of Administration Finance. It's all people.
Yeah.
For, it's, for the most part, it, it's, it is people. There are a couple of areas that, um, you know, there, there were cuts that were made in, in a few areas, some, some trimming. Now, one of those cuts, you'll see on there, we think it's under the independent audit line item, that the Audit Committee came before you folks and wanted to have the town produce what was known as a CAFR, Comprehensive Annual Financial Statement. That cost above and beyond the FY fifteen audit is five thousand dollars, and we are going to move forward with trying to prepare that CAFR internally. However, what we did do is we did not budget for that in FY, um, in FY seventeen. Now, we will continue to try to do that, but there, you know, there, without the auditor's assistance, it's certainly going to be a higher hurdle to get over. And just wanted to make you folks aware of that cut. The, the other area, and there are some things that we are looking at that are not necessarily in the budget at this point in time. The Assessor's Office is, is looking at a, a potential reorganization. They would like to have a, a data collector. And that data collector, in essence, would turn around where we have that nine-year measuring list, that physical inspection of every house. If we were able to use that data collector on a nine-year cycle to visit every property in town, we wouldn't have to expend the hundred and eighty, two hundred thousand dollars that we're gonna have to expend in the year two thousand and twenty-four. It, I guess, you'd have to look at it as an investment, because we would be asking for twenty thousand dollars if we did this, to have a data collector, or whatever the amount was, with the offshoot that you're not going to get the benefit of that until two thousand and twenty-four. So it's kind of hard to, I mean, it's the cost-benefit analysis. I mean, we're throwing out the cost now, but the benefit wouldn't be realized until farther down the road. There are some minor benefits that potentially could be realized, and that would be a, an accelerated realization of new growth, where we would find that, you know, people have done things and not necessarily taken out a building permit, and we would pick up, pick up some new growth. Every year or every nine years when we do that measuring list, we do find those types of things. Whether, whether they've taken out a building permit or not, you know, it's, it's missed on the record somehow, or it's not on the record somehow. If they added a bathroom, little things to that nature. It's, it's one thing that I've spoken to the Board of Assessors about, and we're kind of looking at that. Not necessarily prepared to make that change at this point in time, but maybe for the Board within a year or so with the potential reorganization to have that. The, the accounting office.
Can I stop you there for a minute?
Yes, sure.
Because I didn't quite understand everything you said. So what would the data collector, what would be the mechanism for saving the hundred and eighty or two hundred thousand dollars? I'm not quite following.
The Department of Revenue has, has basically three kinds of revaluations. There's one statistical revaluation that has to be done every year. Basically, it costs us a couple thousand dollars to run that analysis. Then we have the three-year revaluation, which costs us about, I, I think, the, the estimate, the estimate for the next three-year revaluation, that's due in FY nineteen, I'm sorry, FY eighteen, is seventy-five thousand dollars. And that's based upon sales analysis by an outside firm. But every nine years, and you may recall, we just finished this in FY two thousand and fifteen, we have to prove to the Department of Revenue that we have gone out to every individual parcel in town and made, make sure that our records are accurate to, with a physical inspection of that property. Now, if we cannot prove that to them, then basically what we have to do, and what we have done on a nine-year cycle, is hire an outside firm. And, you know, again, the cost of that was a hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty thousand dollars in the FY fif- to get the FY fifteen measuring list revaluation done. So what we would be trying to do is have an internal person do that exact same process that an outside firm did within a, let's say, a six-month or a nine-month period. This person would do it over, you know, a seven to eight-year period to visit, again, every, we'd have to prove to Department of Revenue through the department cards and, and, and the data that we have, that every parcel was reviewed over that nine-year period. And if we were able to prove that, that would eliminate that outside firm doing that same type of work.
So, um, so we have to tell the Department of Revenue that we've physically inspected each home? Does that include going inside?
Part of that physical inspection is to go inside. I don't know if you, you can recall somebody knocking on your door, asking to get inside. They do a general look to make sure that the number of bedrooms, number of bathrooms are accurate, the condition of the inside of the home.
What if somebody says no?
Uh, well, we, we cannot break the door down.
Right, right.
If they do not allow us in, they do not allow us in.
So how, like, so how many do we actually get to?
I, I, I think the majority, I, again, I don't have the stat in front of me. My guess is there's only a handful of people who do not allow those inspectors to come in.
What if somebody just isn't home, you know, when?
Then, then they leave a card, ask them to make an appointment. Right. And if they're, if they're knocking on the door and nobody's home, they will, they will, uh, leave a card, ask them to make an appointment. They will follow up potentially with a knock on the door at a secondary timeframe. But there are times, and, and it does happen, that people either A, do not get the message, or B, just outright refuse people to get inside their home.
Wait, all right. But, but the assumption is that we're getting in enough homes?
To satisfy the Department of Revenue requirements.
Okay.
Paul, can I, I want to ask a question about the, the number of times we mail out tax bills, and that's because for many years we were, we'd been doing it. The first two bills went out at the same time with different dates on them, and I know there were a lot of comments, especially by the people who forgot to mail in their second bill and, on time. And so this year, I think it is, we went back to mailing it out four times. Now I see the budget. We're going back to three.
Again, we had to come up with certain cuts, and you're exactly right. That is a proposed cut.
What, what was the amount, I mean, we're talking about.
Take two thousand dollars.
Two thousand bucks, but, but what's your sense of how many people were paying penalties for this, that it, that the town ought to be spent? I mean, the decision that was made last year that this year we'd spend that two thousand dollars and mail them out, I think that, I would think that there were enough people who were being late or complaining vociferously that it caused us to want to go back to four mailings, right? I mean, they made the decision for a reason.
Right. There, there was always a complaint, you know, that I didn't get that bill, you know, and the reality is, they got the bill. They probably, they, they didn't know that there were two bills in there, and there was one, and they probably threw it away or whatever. There was always that complaint. There, there's a public perception at that time, too, that we're doing it on purpose so that people would pay late, and we would get the extra fees for it. I don't have the exact number of, of those that, you know, the improvement of the timeframes, but I, I will tell you that our revenue for late, the interest on late fees is, is trending ahead of where it was. So it may not have, actually have solved the, um, the whole issue. We are looking at electronic billing, which may help and alleviate that. Potentially, we could have that up and running by the first billing of the fiscal year. It is something that we are looking at. People would have to sign up for it.
Yeah.
Um, in order to get, get that done. But, um, again, I would have to specifically speak to the Treasury Collector. She would be in favor of two separate bills.
Just because of the hassle of people mourning, growing up.
Right, you know, no one wants to deal with angry taxpayers.
From my perspective, for the two thousand dollars and what, what I hear from people, you know, two thousand dollars, let's give better customer service and mail a second bill. And maybe we're gonna save, save that same two thousand dollars back on electronic billing by the number of people who sign up for electronic billing, and we don't have to mail it to at all. And it would be, I, my prediction is, it'd be a very different population. Who sign up for electronic from the people who need every bill.
I will tell you right now, we will want, we will not make that savings, because right now it will still cost us twenty-five cents to send out that electronic billing.
Right.
It costs us fifty cents plus, you know, maybe, maybe seventy cents to send out the bill, and you do the math that there's just not enough people in town to.
Right, okay.
To, to recoup that fully. But you will have a happier customer base in, in, in the cases where, again.
Two thousand dollars seems, I know every penny matters, but it's a, to me, it's a very significant customer service issue.
So Paul, going back to the person who would be looking at properties, and so there are some properties we can't get into, but, you know, the, the Department of Revenue understands that. But, but the building inspector also makes sure that if there's any building projects going on, that there's permits filled, pulled on, and I mean, do the, is that something that, 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 do, do they ever find people doing a project and say, by the way, you didn't pull the permit?
I'm sure that in cases that they do find people, they make them go through the required processes. But if somebody is, is renovating, you know, you have a handyman in town who's renovating his kitchen, you're not out there on, on Saturday morning watching him come in from Home Depot with, uh, you know, all the new cabinets and things to that nature or whatever.
Right.
Um, so there are a lot of renovations that do go on without permits. And, and again, I couldn't tell you exactly how many. They are picked up when we do that actual measuring list. A lot of the new growth, the new growth in FY fifteen was over three hundred thousand dollars. Historically, it's less than two hundred thousand. So there, there is a, you know, there is some revenue that is generated by that measuring list, and whether we could do it on a cyclical basis annually versus a nine-year, you know, it may be cost, you know, it may be a benefit to do that. It would be hard to prove that, though.
Right, yeah.
So this data collector would be just working continuously over the seven or eight years?
They would, yes.
That would, that would be all they'd be doing?
Well, they, right. The, the data collection that they would physically go out and, and gather out in the field, and then they would have to come back, and they would have to revise the, the actual assessor's cards on their property. and then they would have to come back, and they would have to revise the actual assessor's cards on their property. So there would be some outside in-the-field work, and then the actual follow-up would, as far as the data records internally.
Alex, if you figure there's, let's just use 4,900 residents in town. Okay, you're doing over seven years, they gotta do 700 a year, they work 200 days a year, they gotta do three and a half a day. At target, three and a half a day.
And we're talking about a part-time position, we're not talking about a full-time position.
Right. So, you know, so you spend an hour in each house, I mean, that's something to know.
Go ahead, Marie.
Non-benefited, so you're talking. I'm looking at the OPEB boss.
Absolutely, we would certainly try to have it, you know, because obviously, once you get over that 20 hours-
Yeah.
-it throws another 50, 60% of the cost.
Yeah.
So absolutely, we would try to keep it under the 19 hours. It's probably the only way that it would work with the numbers, is to have it underneath that threshold.
Any other questions?
I guess it's only fair to ask you, if you had your wish list, after all the cuts, what would you like to have?
You know what, certainly the mailing is one of them. The other one that I may have acted a little prematurely on is I cut $2,000 from the repairs and maintenance on equipment under elections and registration, figuring that the new voting machines, there wouldn't be as much. But it's more of a, because the presidential election and the primary, it's not only repairs and maintenance, but there's also the cost of having to reprogram and things to that nature. So that was a little premature cut on my end, that if we could get that back, that would be great. If it doesn't go back in, we'll try to find it internally because of all the other line items. Other than that, I mean, you know, there's, we cut nickels and dimes. I think we will be able to get by, you know, without a problem. We cut some of the, we cut two overtime amounts completely out of the budget. One in human resources. That one was used mainly for making sure our payroll always got out on time. Sometimes there are computer glitches, sometimes there's sicknesses within the department that, you know, takes us a little bit longer. Computer glitch, our hands are tied. We'll go with comp time in that specific area. The other one was we cut, it's again, a small amount of $500 from the treasurer collector's office. That was basically to either, every now and then, there's a Friday where real estate tax bills are due. So we keep open on a Friday after, that Friday afternoon where we're normally closed. And also other collection periods to make sure that when there are large collections, a lot of it comes into the mail, especially the motor vehicle excise, that we make sure we have that money in the bank within 24-hour period, little things like that. Again, we're talking some chump change, really, that's a $500 amount. But those are the types of things that are used for. But I think the top two things would be the mailing and the clerk's $2,000 for the voting machines.
Paul, are we allowed to mail water bills with tax bills? I know we have two different companies that do it, but I get the bills like one day after the other, I'm saying, you know.
Tax bills are sacrilegious. You have to be careful of every little, I mean, the formatting has to be just so, and I don't think we can do it with real estate tax bills. We could insert with water bills, if there was another type of bill that went out or a notice, we could insert those into the water bills, but I do not believe that we are allowed to insert anything with the tax bills.
Okay, thank you.
Not even ads?
I'm sorry?
Ads, we could start selling ads to go in.
No, we could with the water sewer bills. Yeah, I mean, there were, it's less, it's less-
Home flooded?
Exactly.
Call, call this flood, right?
Well, have we looked into revenue, interesting revenue ways like doing that?
No.
Any questions, Tom, listen?
I just had a question about, you know, the auditing, you know, because, you know, from where we sit, you know, we, you know, we have a, we can look at trends and say, okay, things aren't increasing periodically, you know, and we understand why they decrease and so forth. But in terms of, you know, looking at, you know, receipts being submitted and sort of, I mean, as I approach something as big as a budget like this, I mean, I would think that, you know, if you randomly were to select certain areas and then just, you know, look and see if they are accurately reporting everything and purchasing everything and utilizing it and getting receipts in, in some way, is that what outside audits do? And we have those periodically, right?
Well, the outside audit is done annually.
Okay.
We have an outside auditor annually. Internally, we do a number of audits. The most time that we spend are, the most time we spend is with accounts payable. We make sure that things are done through the procurement laws. We make sure that they are accounted for in the correct line items, per se. We've just had some changeover in the accounting office, and the group that is in there now is a little bit tougher than the previous, which is good because they're finding a number of things that are questionable, that maybe are not, you know, illegal or anything, but we just need an extra step. I will give you an example, tolls from the mass, you know, from the turnpike. We're always looking for receipts.
Yeah, oh, right, yeah.
Things to that nature, I know that one was going to hit home. But, you know, again, those are the types of things that we look for. Somebody puts down that they went to a meal or something, well, why did you go to a meal? Or why did you, you know, why this, or why that? I mean, we just don't want to reimburse someone for things that, you know, are written down on paper. So we are tougher in that regard. Like I said, the group now is new, and they do ask a lot more questions. The way that the purchase order system that we have set up, we're changing it around a little bit. Everything goes through the procurement officer, so he's able to see all the purchase orders that are written. One, to make sure if they hit, again, the procurement laws, if you hit certain thresholds, to make sure that the procurement laws are followed. But he also looks at them to see if there's, you know, a better, a better opportunity to buy whatever goods or services the different departments are looking at. So we've made that change, or are going to be making that change very soon, it's in the process, where he did see most things at the school department that were over $5,000. He's now going to see that everything is going to go through him also. He certainly looks at the things that are over $5,000 because in that particular case, a contract may be needed and things of that nature. So he's also pretty, pretty tough. I probably shouldn't say this, but we have new language because we, when it comes to procurement, we have, if it's chattable, because his name is Chad, it's fine, it'll pass muster for the most part. But he is, he's also pretty tough on the departments with keeping things in line and getting things in order, making sure the contracts are there, making sure the, all the change orders are in line, all the procurement laws are followed also.
Okay.
There is one other area that I do want to bring up that is kind of a mystery at this point in time, and that's the, when we get into the presidential election, the early voting. Apparently, the Secretary of State has not really set up the guidelines of that early voting. And potentially, the way Kathy Ingram thinks it's going to happen is that we're basically going to have to set up a little polling area, probably weeks before the actual polling date. And that's obviously going to have to be manned by certain personnel. So there is some of that, there's a guesstimate of how much, how much extra cost is there. But until we have that information from the Secretary of State as to identify exactly what we need to do, we really don't have a grasp on that number. And again, we're talking about probably setting up weeks in advance so people have an opportunity to maybe get away from the absentee balloting and actually do a regular ballot.
What, in Debbie's office?
I'm sure Debbie would love that. Again, I, I mean, again, I think there's the privacy things and all that kind of issues that go on with your normal balloting that, you know, maybe we'll have something in the community house and, you know, the back auditorium area or something like that that the people come in. But you're probably still going to have to have somebody who's checking them in, checking them out. And you're probably going to have to have, you know, a clerk or a warden watching all that also. I would even know if you have to have a police officer there.
Oh, my gosh, that would be, this would be horrendously expensive.
Yeah, no, absolutely, it's going to be very, it could be very expensive. Again, I don't know if we'll be able to get away from the police officer to protect those ballots like we normally do on a, on a regular election. I mean, that's their primary function, and their primary function is not necessarily to, you know, make sure the safety of, you know, the traffic and everything like that. They're in there to protect the integrity of those ballots also.
Yes.
So.
There's been old stories of people stealing ballboxes.
Yeah, no, absolutely. So, I mean, again, these questions are unanswered at this point in time. And we tried to build in a budget that was going to accommodate, you know, minimally some extra hours for polling, some early voting. But we just don't know to what extent the Secretary of State is going to, you know, have those regulations done.
So if this isn't really pulled together properly, the people who go for early voting may have a longer line than people go on voting day.
Potentially, I mean, I would hope to, I would hope not, but yeah, you never know.
Yeah.
You'd never know.
I wonder why it couldn't just be done the way we do absentee ballots?
You know, I mean, what, early voting is really, absentee ballots, I mean, but why the change? With the Secretary, we have a change that physically they're going to cast a ballot that will go through the machine immediately.
All right. Can I just ask one more question? I don't recall us talking about the solid waste sanitation recycling budget. The changes are, except for the-
Where are you, Mark?
I'm on page 12, but the top of page 12. But other than the cost of pickup, which I understand because I was in on the budget, on the contract negotiation, the people cost is all, that all still reallocation, Paul?
The, right, those increases are from the allocation.
That's all part of the DPW allocation that you sent before, okay.
Right, they have at least a .4, you know, in between the different, I haven't-
I guess my question, there are no hours changes expected of the part-time?
No, no.
Yeah, that's, that's the biggest thing people are concerned about, is that the recycling center, the leaf yard or something that we're going to close it down or we're going to change the hours. And you're saying that's not anticipated in the budget?
The biggest thing there, Mark, is like I said, in the full-time equivalencies, doing that allocation, it goes up like .35 of a full-time equivalency based upon that allocation. And that's not, that's, and that's the reason why it goes from $85,000 to $90,000, that one line item plus the overtime amount. But it is that cost allocation.
Okay.
Like I said, there's a little bit more time of-
And the line item that says sanitation, recycling, pickup, that's collection plus the fuel adjustment because it's all one vendor. So I assume that that's the fuel adjustment that you have in there.
The reason why we adjusted that is because we just got a big reduction, as you may or may not know, but we got like a $10,000 reduction from the last six months. So we're kind of counting on that going all the way through next year to make this work. But yeah, it would normally take the fuel adjustment plus the actual cost.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for Paul? Well, I'm sure you're going to stay with us, Paul, but- Yeah, right now, right now, we've got meetings scheduled for, what, 14th?
14th, 16th, 17th.
14th, 16th, and the 17th will be our public, public meeting. Marie, you're going to be gone on the 14th. So in advance of that, we're going to try to work on negotiations around and do a vote on all items that we want votes on when we have a full board. And I guess that, so that would be the 16th and the, for, and the 21st.
Why are we meeting on the 14th if we can't really take any action?
Because you have Capitol planning's making a presentation.
Capitol planning's making a presentation and all that.
And there was another department, wasn't there? I was going to miss a department.
No, I think we're two of the departments. But we can, we can certainly debate, Mark, and propose and everything, but I thought we'd save our votes if we got a full board. Or we can cancel the meeting, it depends on what shape we're in, too.
Well, not if we have Capitol planning coming on.
Right, they're coming in, and they have a brief session. I haven't got confirmation on Capitol, I've got confirmation on the community preservation.
And they're coming on the 14th?
Yeah, they'll be in on the 14th.
St. Patrick's Day is 17th?
Yes.
That's the community-
Right, you won't be here.
Yeah, I wasn't.
You were the only member that wasn't available on that night, for the, for the president of the community.
Oh, good, okay, good, because I was like, a little panicked.
No, 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 I looked at the matrix, there were, we had one more day in there, I think the 18th, and so everybody was here. We shouldn't need it. And we, of course, the 21st is when we have a regular meeting, when we'll vote on the entire budget.
So, Richard, if I could just kind of see where we need to go. We currently have proposed in front of us what I'm going to call the March 3rd budget from the town manager. And that's what we've been using for this review the last week or so.
I'm not sure what you're referring to.
The March 3rd budget, line item budget. So it's this whole line item, literally, line item detail.
Since March 3rd, nothing's changed.
And there's been no other written budget since March 3rd. Upper left.
All right, mine says February 26th.
Well, that's the old one.
Right.
There's a March 3rd one.
March 3rd is, had been sent out.
And we have spoken over the last week and a half with department heads, and I would suspect, because Marie shared with us her list, I have a list of things I'd like to see different, and I hope that Tom and Alex and you, Richard, all have potential things. And I guess the question is, how do we move from five lists to one list? And then from that one list to how we pay for it? Because then there's the big other list, which is the school department. And when and how do we have those discussions? Because the last, and if I can use the March 3rd budget as a summary, and I don't want to confuse people with numbers, but the last I heard, we had a difference between the March 3rd budget and our revenue of $226,000, give or take, which was $308,000 from the February 29th budget, reduced by $100,000 because we had our, our medical expenses only going up, $100,000 less than they thought, we thought they were going up, right? And there was an add-back for the Bliss tennis court, I thought that was $18,000?
That was 11.
So it was $11,000?
But I thought it was 150 we were off.
It is 150 that we were off, but I'm assuming Mark is not accepting the fact that we had to change the select board's initiatives.
Right, I'm still on the, that's right, I'm still on the February 29th funding initiative level.
Okay. Mark, could you, I'm sorry, what?
Let me go through this again.
No, no, it's okay, I think I followed you, but you said 308 minus 100 plus 11.
Right, it should be two, it should be-
It's 11 something, it's not a flat 11, right?
So let's call it 12, so we'll make it 220.
Okay.
Okay? And that would be at the February 29th funding levels of OPEB and capital expenditures, right? So the difference between the February 29th level of expenditures, right?
But isn't it easier to just say, to go with the March 3rd, and we're off 150 in balancing, if you want to make changes back to the policy? I think to go, to say what we have in front of us is March 3rd, but I'm really going to roll it back to the last rendition. I think it's easier just to say March 3rd, and if you want to make changes to the March 3rd, then we make changes to the March 3rd as your recommendation.
Yeah, I guess you're right, Marie, it is semantics. I guess I'm just unwilling to start from a base of having cut our policy initiatives back to last year's level.
But we've cut, I mean, March 3rd's cutting a lot of stuff. It's not just cutting the initiatives, there's a huge amount that's cut. And I just think we need to start somewhere, and it doesn't mean, I mean, this, that was one of the things I want to talk about in my select board comments, is March 3rd was recommendation by town manager and his staff to following, to not only follow as much as he could the directives of the board, but also to try to accommodate the only budget that's been voted in so far, which is the February school budget. And so one of the things that disturbs me about the way we're approaching this budget is everyone's taking the draft budget of March 3rd that has a lot of changes on it that we haven't agreed to, and they're going out and talking to the public about it. These, this is just a draft proposition that we, as a board, have to start digesting and moving forward on and deliberating. And the reason I put this in, this is just like a wish list, there's things for us to start talking about because we haven't gotten to the point where we- we haven't gotten to the point where we have looked at this, and like you said, I'm unhappy with rollbacks that were there. Well, I'm unhappy with some of the other rollbacks, but we have to balance and figure out where we're going. So really, the March third, we really shouldn't be going out and telling everyone, well, all these changes have been made, because absolutely no changes have been made. These are just recommendations.
Well, you're right, Marie.
And so that's one thing. The other thing that disturbs me is, we are trying to figure out how we're going to negotiate with the schools. And part of the negotiating with the schools, or any negotiation, is when you go forward on the negotiations, they've told us where they are, we don't know where we are yet. But we really shouldn't be sitting there talking and complaining about the school budget until we've really decided where we need to be. Right now, a recommendation was made to get us at a hundred and fifty difference. Maybe that's going to go up to two hundred, maybe it's going to go down to fifty. But until we have actually done our work, I thought we all agreed we weren't going to talk about it. We were not going to be talking about the schools.
But we've got to come up with our list, and that's where I was going. How do we come up with a budget that, that we want to say, this is the select board's in a vacuum of the school department's budget, this is what the select board would like to do?
And the way we usually have done it in the past, of course, I haven't been pleased with the way we did it sometime in the past, and that is, we look at the recommendations, and then we go and we vote on what we think the changes should be on it.
And then we come out looking like, like we don't know what we're doing, because we have amendments, motions with, that are amended, and then re-re amended.
That's, I'm talking about here.
No, no, not on the town floor. We do that here. Somebody makes a motion, I move that we add two thousand dollars so we can do quarterly billing of taxes. And then we, you know, and to do them one at a time...
How else would you do it, Mark?
I'd much rather have a discussion to come to a consensus, so we have one motion that incorporates everything rather, because then we are really balancing them. The other way is, we're looking at one at a time, then we go back, now we got to change that, and we do it with motions and redo the motions. And to discuss it and come to a consensus, essentially without a motion.
We'll still have to discuss each element.
Of course we will. And then come up with one motion that says...
Okay, well, that should be fine.
Here's where we want to go. And that way, it's cleaner for us, too, because if you then say, well, we really need to take five hundred dollars out that line item, we don't have to go back with a formal process of making a motion.
That's fine. But I want to also go back to the point that we should not be talking about our happiness or unhappiness with the school budget. Because until we have our own budget, then we can decide how far apart we are or how close. And I'm disturbed about emails going back and forth. I'm disturbed about people going out on LCTV and talking about the budget when we don't even have a budget yet. People going out and putting things on Facebook until we have a budget. We got to do some major work in here. And until we do that work, anything that becomes chatter out there, actually, I think, makes it more difficult when we finally have to sit down and get to that compromise budget, which is what we do. So I go back, and I asked again a couple of times, are we going to go to the schools and talk to them about the hundred and fifty? And the consensus on this board was no, we're not going anywhere towards asking the schools to make any changes until we really know where we want to be. I asked it again the last two meetings. And again, everyone says, no, we're going to do our work first. I'm just asking the board to, let's do the work, let's not talk in the newspapers or on media or anything about where our concerns are about the budget, until we really know what that is. Because I really don't know where that's going to be.
Great speech, Marie, but you can't shut down free speech in this town, because you want to shut down free speech.
No, but it's called being a responsible...
No, no, it's not.
When you're going ready to enter negotiations, or then we have to clearly say that anything anyone says out there, the school committee should not take umbrage with, they should not be upset about, and, but that's what's going to happen. So negotiations, let's figure out what we want before we go and start bashing other boards and saying what's right and that's wrong. And let's try to do it as a board, too, rather than everyone running off and saying, the sky's falling here, this is going to happen, we're never going to get this done. I think, as two boards, we can get this done.
But the fact is, we have a public document that says February third on the top of it, that's a proposal by the town manager. And to deny that that exists is just not fair to the people in town.
But it's just...
And that's what you're saying. Let's not talk about that because it's not fair.
No, I'm saying, when you go out and tell the people, this is what's happening because a recommendation was made March third, then you are basically saying, we as a board have given up our responsibilities and rights and obligations to sit there and to actually get the budget done.
I don't think anyone's saying that.
Why on earth should we be fighting over a proposition that was put in front of us when we haven't even decided we're going to make changes on it? If we don't like something in it, then we make changes. And before we start to tell the school committee, well, you need to make these changes here, we have to decide where we are as a board on our budget. And we do not have a budget yet. It's always a very difficult process of march and the process of procedures. But the more we go in there and we start the chatter, we start the bad feelings, it makes it more difficult when we finally have to sit down and look at that compromise budget. So all I'm asking is more measured talk, more of the board deciding what we want as board. And then at the end, after we've, let's say we've voted on the twenty-sixth, and you're outraged by what this board voted on, and someone on the select board says, this is wrong, they definitely can go out and say, talk against, I don't feel it's right, I think the facilitator said we don't do that. But you can't stop that. But to start the argument, start the comments before we even have a budget, I think you're messing up the waters. And that's why I ask people, if we need to, let's take three or four days and get our work done and get to where we need to be. And then we can sit there and start bashing the budget. But if we bash a budget we don't even have, I think it makes the process much more difficult.
So we've got, you say, Mark's got a list, you've got a list, Marie, Tom may have a list, Alex got a list. All of them are going to be heard. And you won't be here on the fourteenth, so I'll assume you'd like to breeze down through your list tonight. At least tell the people what you're thinking about.
And again, this is just to start the thought process. How much I'm going to fight for this at the end, it's just to begin. Maybe, and I don't even want to start the discussion, maybe I'm going to say, you know, number five, and then Paul or Stephen will say, that's really nice, but you legally can't do it, or this is the reason why it's not good. So my idea, the only thing is, what I've gotten here on the list is trying to find compromise or different ways to approach items.
Okay, we realize Stephen's not here tonight.
Right. And so...
Why don't you start down through your list?
I'd be glad to just read through it.
And start explaining your thought behind that, because that's going to be part of the process.
Okay, return tree planting line item in the budget. We had voted that in, I think, back in two thousand and eleven. My understanding, speaking to the, the tree warden in Springfield and other towns, having a tree planting line item is important, because then you actually can see progress, what you can measure, you can change.
Okay, well, what is your funding source for that, Marie?
No, it's the same funding source we have, we just have it all together.
It's segregated.
It's just segregated back. And I don't care how much the tree warden feels is essential.
Do you have this set up for your line, or for your pages in the budget, so we can go through it quickly?
The tree plant, the tree, no, I didn't pull that out, on what line that was.
I would have to get that number from Mario.
On which one it is, yeah.
On how much it is built into the forestry budget.
So you want to take the DPW line item that says forestry and split it into two lines?
Yes. And we had done that a couple of years ago, it just disappeared. And that way, at the end of the year, we could say, okay, we're supposed to attend twenty thousand dollars on trees, how much did we spend?
But Marie, but you realize that, that within the DPW, the money is, to some degree, fungible?
Oh, I know. But what we find is, unless we have actually pulled it out, often you don't get the trees planted, it ends up going elsewhere. And we need to not just be grinding stumps and trimming, but we have to have a program that moves forward on new growth and new plantings. But I didn't want to discuss each item, because I think what we need to do is, everyone get their ideas and pull it down. So I didn't want to really...
Why wouldn't you want to discuss it?
I didn't even understand what that meant, though, so...
They're going to have to be discussed, Marie.
Well, I, yeah, I thought we would do that on Thursday.
Well, and you're not going to be here on the fourteenth, so why don't you go through your list? And that way, we know what you're thinking.
All right, and number two...
In case we have a question for you.
That's fine. Number two, I agree to let the chief decide what he wants to do with the crosswalk problem program, because I think he's actually investing more in it by picking out and having a...
What do you mean by the crosswalk?
The crossing guards.
Crossing guards.
Yeah, crossing guard program. Because what he's doing is, he's really having someone specifically working on making this into a better program. So there is more investment, but it's being pulled out of the actual temp work into a permanent position. I'm not sure if we can use this as a way of having money in the reserve fund in case we come to September, and all the work this, I think it is going to be a gentleman, is put into it, he's decided he really needs more, because we had a huge burst of kids that moved into town.
Paul, what's your feelings on that?
If you want to put the amount in the reserve fund, it's fine. I just would not recommend taking it from the source at this point in time, identified.
Okay. And so that is definitely open to discussion. The funding, the sidewalk repair program...
Marie, could I just...
Yeah, hold on, now what's...
Oh, sure. So, I asked, I mean, you guys probably didn't like how many questions I asked, but I tried to clarify some of these things. My understanding was that the traffic sergeant and the crossing guards, those were unrelated items.
Oh, no. He's in charge of this whole thing.
No, I understand, but, but I asked him, is, are you cutting the crossing guard to, to fund the traffic sergeant? He said, no. So I'm not exactly sure what's going, I mean, because I was wondering whether that was the case. I mean, like, there's a certain, you know, you could see how that might happen, but he said that wasn't the case. So I'm not sure what's going on there.
Well, all I know is that I'm willing to look at the program, but I want a safety valve. And that was my recommendation, of having money in the reserve fund as a safety valve in case there's more needed. The funding source, I was open to. The monitoring, the camera, we've had so much damage at the pool. I know Chief Chiano's been talking about that for years. If we could find ways of at least starting one camera as a pilot project, I think that would be great. I'm sorry, no, I'm talking about the DPW sidewalk repair. What he was describing there was fabulous, which means, how many times do we hear about two or three squares that are horribly damaged and they're tripped problems? But the way we now have our sidewalk program, it's, you got to be on the schedule. And he says he has a way of doing it, not too expensively, but it has to come out of the operational budget. My thought was, let's decrease the sidewalk capital fund to fund that equipment or whatever he said he needed in order to do professional...
I don't think it was equipment, he's just talking about supplies and materials, Marie.
Yeah.
Yeah, he already had it in there, though, I thought.
No, he didn't, he cut it. He said if he had more money, that's what he would like to do.
Hmm, I don't think that's accurate. I'm trying to find the line item. Boy, it'd be nice if you'd put the line items on your, or the page.
Oh, I don't, you know I never...
I know you do.
I never do that. Okay. And then the monitoring camera, as I said, that's been rolling out for years, and we never invest in it, and that's, the pools are very, very valuable.
Okay, Marie, hold on one second, go back to your thing. FY fourteen, they had fourteen, or ten thousand, they expended about eleven thousand. And fifteen, they spent about eleven. Then they took the program to fifteen, then they took the program to thirty thousand, then they took the program to fifty.
What are you talking about?
I'm drawing your sidewalks.
Oh, we're back in the sidewalks, okay.
And then they took it to fifty, and then they're only cutting it back fifteen. So although it looks like there's a wild amount of stuff doing, they're going back to the FY sixteen program levels.
Well, when it comes to the capital, I don't have that capital plan that we've really presented. So the only thing I was saying is trying to find a place to be able to allow the sidewalk repair program in.
Okay, but he's got fifteen thousand in there for the program.
Yeah, but that's not for what he described, which is...
Yes, it is. Yes, it is. That's his program.
All right, I'll check with him. My understanding, he was...
What's it for? It's not for the capital sidewalks. If it's not for the repairs of sidewalks, what's it for?
Yeah. See, Mike used to have five thousand in there. And now they're taking it up to fifteen, plus they're getting three to four hundred thousand coming in on the other side for the sidewalks.
Okay, so you're saying that he did have that. I understood he had cut it.
No, no.
That he could no longer do the special program that he wanted to be able to have a, not just tar put down, you know how they put those, but to actual cement.
Right, right. He's talking about having his crew put in three or four panels at a time.
Exactly.
I think one way to solve this would be if there's just a kind of acknowledgement by the select board that he's thinking the capital money has to be done almost in a whole length of street.
No.
That's what Mario's under the impression of. But if the select board would allow him to not only do the streets, but to do those couple of slabs with his capital money, then he would be all set.
Their fund was built up to do sidewalks, period.
Then, then to do those couple of slabs would be allowable under the capital money. So that's, that's a clarification that will go back to Mario, he would be fine, because he would know he would have the extra money.
Do you think that's what spawned this then, Paul?
Absolutely.
Yeah, because, I mean, he's got a contractor that does it for forty-five dollars a lineal foot, and that's a good price.
Now, he says he wants to do it in-house for those long repairs.
Remember why Paul's saying he's wanting to do this in-house, that's interesting.
Right, no, he would still, he would still set it up in-house, but, you know, again, with his labor, but he would still, he would have to buy the cement from that capital item, which, again, you're saying is allowable. He was under the impression that he would have to do a full length of street or X amount of linear feet from that capital, and can't just do a couple slabs from a capital standpoint. Those would be more of an operating maintenance.
Yeah, because it wasn't put, yeah, it was put in that it didn't have to meet the thresholds of individual capital programs. It was put in as an aggregate sum for the entire sidewalk program.
That was the impression that Mario was under.
Okay. Well, then, Marie, he might be okay.
Then he might not be, he just might need a directive, you're saying, saying it's okay.
Right, some acknowledgement by the select board, say that's okay to do a couple slabs here and there, along with some major capital.
Yeah.
In the monitoring cameras, I think that that, coming up on all the changes that are going around town, the problems we've had with increase of burglaries and thefts, and we've started to have more graffiti and damage around the pools, I think we have to start developing a monitoring program. So I think we could start with one camera and see how it is with the investment and the use. There was terrible damage down in Greenwood. I'd like us to start looking towards investing in the monitoring program.
And that will especially be important if you start buying chairs and umbrellas.
Yes, exactly. Because they will throw them in the pool.
Or take them home.
Or take them home. It, we, one of our goals, we said, was to create an innovation fund for pilot projects, so departments could try to do innovative ways of providing services or else to save costs. And we haven't actually budgeted for that this year. I would like us to think about creating that innovation fund, and the source of funding I was looking at, and again, this was just an idea, because we always should try to find sources of funding, was Article Five.
And what would you do with Article Five?
We'd just bond the whole thing. What was the use of, that's free cash to go over to pay for the high school. And I would say, we would use that to try to start moving forward in more efficient programming. The energy fund, we're supposed to have one for the Green Communities Act, and the money that we get from the grants is supposed to be put into reducing energy costs. And then you take some of those savings and you put them back in a fund. We really haven't gotten that going yet, because we're stuck on our first project. I'm not sure where we are going to go with that. I was thinking if we could start funding that even with a small amount, so that we've got that fund going, and we can start doing small investments and small energy projects. And again, that would be up to the board to decide which ones they want to do, whether it's taking one streetlights and putting the efficient lighting, or, you know, the heads on some of the streetlights, or maybe doing something around some of the buildings, because I know we still have some light fixtures that could be fixed around some of our buildings.
Can you hold your breath just a minute?
Sure.
Paul, what are your thoughts on this one?
I don't necessarily have a problem with creating the energy fund, again...
I mean, those three, those three, that five, six, and seven.
Right. As you know, my recommendation was to take seventy-eight out of free cash, and one of the main reasons it takes a lot of that money out of free cash is because it was rebate money that we got. About sixty-six thousand dollars in rebate money, so I was just kind of rounding it off. But if we don't do that, in my opinion, we are double taxing the taxpayer, because we really had a reduction, the amount that we have in free cash didn't go as a net against the building. It went into our free cash. If we're able to raise not only the amount of that building, and not take that sixty-six thousand dollars into consideration, or seventy-eight in this particular case, they're going to be, in essence, paying for it twice.
But it is the model that the Commonwealth has given us, which, when you have efficiency savings, and pay it forward into the next project.
It's only the funding source that I would disagree with. I don't disagree with the concept that you're trying to accomplish. It would be the funding source that I would disagree with. I would say, again, it was my recommendation to take, we owe two-hundred-and-seventy-eight on the building, take the first seventy-eight out of free cash, because technically sixty-six thousand dollars of that came back in rebates, and it's in our pocket already. So I don't disagree with what you're saying, other than the funding source that you're utilizing here.
Okay.
Would you have another recommendation for a funding source?
There's, you're going to have to cut something, or, you know, there's nowhere else to go.
Right.
I do not have a recommendation.
Okay. Okay.
The number eight since seven was based on the, is amend Article 7 to include stormwater. There's regional district.
That's not a budget I can own.
Yeah. Because one of the things that we're talking about is they encourage you to do regionalization. Remove more from the OPEB fund to cover a deficit with a commitment to the schools.
Marie, the stormwater regional district, is this the thing that we've talked about in terms of having a separate utility?
No. What the $50,000 for is to investigate the possibility of a stormwater utility. I'm saying to also add to that is one of the things, when you look at utility, we, you can actually, if you do it with multiple towns, there's savings. So, I was concerned that if we just, say, look into the enterprise fund and we don't put something about regional aspects of it, we might limit our ability to spend the 50,000. But that's just an idea to throw out there. The other is, I'm willing to go further down in the OPEB fund to cover the deficit between the schools, but we, I'd like us to use that as an opportunity to set a joint goal, such as decreasing the number of benefited positions, start to negotiate flexibility of funding of retiree health insurances with the employees, and lobby for small changes in state statute.
And who would you like to do that with?
The schools. Because right now, one of the first things we did with OPEB is that we actually, the huge change was a change in the health insurance. We changed the model for the retirees and we saved millions. So, often, it's not just putting money aside, it's making changes within your structure. But for us to just do it on our side doesn't make sense. If the schools are willing to sit down with us and start making a commitment to these type of things, I think that would be a huge step. So, sometimes it's not the number of the bottom line, it's instituting programs that we organize and work together on. Number 10 is, I'm really concerned that we drain that health insurance.
Hold on one second.
Oh, sure.
Have you done any, talking to anybody on the school's side, or?
No, because I feel it's inappropriate.
Okay, but I mean, in the discussions, though, that you've had with energy, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, has there been any appetite demonstrated for acceptance on anything like this?
I think there was a discussion that this was great, that we sit down and start working on joint energy reduction goals in the task force. I think that when I was chair and we did the joint administrative meetings, we did start talking about the mutual OPEB costs, but I've never brought this up with anyone before.
The reason I wonder, because they don't pay OPEB costs.
Can I just be excused for a little while? I just, my daughter's waiting for a ride, and I thought my wife was, but she's down at the concert.
Oh.
Oh.
I'll be back in about 20 minutes.
Okay, Paul.
We're not here.
Hey, Paul, leave your credit card, please.
My whole wallet's on the chair.
Okay, okay.
No, I don't, I don't know if they're willing to, but I think that we're all facing the same problem. And the schools, I think, when we've had our joint meetings, understand if the OPEB costs start growing every year, it's going to start eating up their budget. So, it's a problem we all have together. So, I would like us to be able to start those discussions, and if we can have a commitment that we look to try to decrease benefited positions over the next five to 10 years, I think that will be a huge change.
Well, yeah, well, it definitely would, but I don't, okay.
I mean, are we, are we discussing these now, or are we just listening?
Yeah, we can discuss.
I mean, Marie, I mean, here, you're saying, we're going to take more out of the OPEB fund with discussing reducing the potential demand of the OPEB fund. But, you know, I put out a chart a week ago that says we're so far behind that we can't decrease the OPEB fund, even if we do decrease the number of benefited positions, negotiate the flexibility of retiring health insurance, which I'm not even sure we're allowed to do under state law.
Yeah, you are.
And we can, we can continue to negotiate the flexibility of funding of retiree health insurance and lobby for small changes in state statutes. And that's, that's great, but I just don't see this as, I think it's got very, very long-term possible benefits with very, very short-term immediate detriments.
Yeah, and I think what we're talking about is our problems coming up in eight to 10 years, we could start changing the trajectory of that. It'll make a difference in your charts. So, that's, that's my belief.
And the way to do that is increase the funding, because we're going right now.
You can't just do funding. It's got to be more. It's got to be structural changes within the program. So, this is.
I guess the problem that I sense with it is I can't make the connection between removing money from OPEB fund to cover deficit with commitment to the schools. I can't, I can't make that quantum leap there.
The reason is, until we start sitting together and talking about and making changes in our structure, and that's going to be the schools and the select board, and I believe that to say we're going to pull something aside in order to have a joint commitment, I think that would be huge if we would get them every year to sit down and do joint goals with us.
I understand. But go back to, we're removing money from OPEB to cover deficit with a commitment. I mean, are you talking about you're buying their commitment?
Yeah, yeah. I respect their commitment that they want to sit down and do joint goals with us every year.
But they're, they don't care about OPEB.
I think that's wrong. I think that we've had conversations in front of them and they have shown concern. They did do the joint letter last year that we sent to Beacon Hill. I think that they have listened and they are concerned.
Okay, when I say they don't care, I don't mean that they don't have sympathy for OPEB in its general, but they're, it's not in their budget. It's, we pay OPEB on this side of the budget. I mean, the concern is heavy on our part.
But it's, I think it is also heavy on theirs because they know it's going to eat away on their operating funds. Of course.
But nothing's eaten away on their operating funds. And they haven't demonstrated that anything eats away yet.
Okay.
So, I mean.
Well, I personally, yeah. Mark, I mean, they're firing people.
They do that every year.
No, no, I mean, they're cutting, I mean, they made cuts that hurt.
Yeah.
So, I think that it's time to start having these discussions with them. That's my feeling.
Okay.
The, create the fund for the healthcare costs. That was drained, and I just think that was criminal two years ago, because this would have really solved our problem. I'd like to see us reestablish this. And this is where you see me asking the schools to start putting funding towards this, too, because the health insurance cost is eating away at their budget. This is why we're having trouble this year, and this is why subsequently they're having trouble this year. Maybe we could talk them into using the vending machine money going into the fund and amend Article 13 to support health insurance fund. But that would be a possibility of way of looking outside the box.
What do they use their money for, how?
It just goes into their general student activities.
Okay.
It's not much money.
Because it's perceived as student money.
Right.
Yeah, it's not much. We get a little bit from parks and recs, too. I mean, it's, we're probably talking about $5,000 a year. But it means that it's a joint commitment that we've got to start setting money aside for the health insurance hits when they come.
So, Marie, if I understand what you're saying, so this would be kind of this, and I don't mean this pejorative, I'm just searching for the word, a slush fund to be there in the event as this year, the yearly increase was more than expected.
Right. When we start to go over 5% increase, and it really is majorly destructive. We have Scantic Valley that's putting a million dollars towards it. We had before probably $375,000 in a fund. And if it had, by now, it would have been over 400, and we would have had no trouble this year. But I think it's important for the schools to realize, and that's why I'm making a series of these small things, that we sit down together and start doing long-term goals and ways of, say, protecting both our budgets. And so, this was one way of doing it.
So, how would that be, and again, I'm not trying to be antagonistic, I'm just trying to understand. So, how would that be different from putting, I mean, I'm guessing our auditor, we can really go rogue here, we don't have the town manager to rein us in, but, but I guess what I'm wondering is, how is that fund different from reserves? I mean, to me, it seems like it's a type of reserve. I mean, it's money, it's sitting in a fund, and if, and if it is simply a reserve, just with another title, then why couldn't we just go into our regular reserves?
Alex, I agree with you, Alex. I think that, Marie, your comments here, create a fund for health insurance, create a fund for field maintenance, create a fund for, you know, what you're doing, proposing is tie the hands of future select boards by saying, we're going to create all these buckets with great restrictions, when in fact, you really aren't, because all it takes is a majority vote in the town to move the money out of these funds. And so, why don't we just, because money is fungible anyway, you know, that's what reserves are for, and that's what free cash is for. And, but we're so reluctant to pull the money out of the reserves because, my goodness, Moody's will say, you're taking money out of your reserves. But I got to believe that Moody's looks at all these funds as part of your reserves anyway. So, you're doing the same thing.
No, they don't. But what I was trying to do here is find a way for the select board and the schools to work together on these pressure points.
Right.
And trying to find ways of us working together to bring down what are going to be the hits in the next few years. If we had sat there and done some long-term financial planning as two groups working together, whether you want to put it in funds, but we need to find a commitment on both boards that we're going to solve this problem. Because if we keep saying that's the town's problem, well, the schools know it's not just the town's problem, it's both our problems. If we telling the schools, well, we're going to take all this money and we're going to put it in OPEB funding, unless they're part of the discussion, they're part of this planning, we're always going, it's always going to be a fight between the two until we hit the wall. I would like us to find ways that we're working together, committing together, even if it's a small amount coming from the schools saying, we've got to work towards these issues. So, as I said, I'm not wedded to these, but I'd like to find a new way that we're approaching some of these budget issues so that we're laying the groundwork, that we're working together on those issues going in the future. So, the last is a way of us working together in that they're always frustrated with the way the fields are. And they keep coming back to us and saying, we've got to fix the fields. And we say, we're running out of money. And what we do is we cut DPW. And DPW, the first thing is going to be the grass mowing. So, we've complained and fought to the two groups together forever on these issues. I would like us to find a way to sit down together and find a solution together. So, it doesn't mean we need to do it at this budget unless we're actually going to put some money from the budget into it, but I'd like us to find a way that we're working together to solve these problems instead of just going back and forth. So, that was number, oh, you heard us talking?
Oh, I'm sorry. No, I just walked in.
Oh, we're, we're always talking about you. Good things, okay.
Okay, now we've got to clean it up. By the way, for you folks, Janet Robinson, the chair of the school committee, just walked in. That's what caused the attention swing, so.
And the same thing is, see, the leasing program ended up saving us money last year. Maybe we should look and see if there's one more piece we could add to the leasing program.
They haven't asked for a vehicle that I know of this year.
No, I think.
And, oh, by the way, I heard they haven't fully evaluated whether it was successful.
Well, he said, we saved this year because the weather was so good.
Because the weather was so good.
Yeah.
But if the weather wasn't good, maybe we wouldn't have.
I would recommend you drop that off. I think we've got competent people down there. They should come to us and let's set up us forcing leasing back down towards them.
Marie, actually, I'd like to stay on your field maintenance fund. Because you're talking about hiring seasonal temps. And are you imagining that these people would be like, cutting grass?
We do that every year. We hire seasonal temps for the maintenance.
Right.
But there's always, whenever we go to cut our budget, we cut those. So, it's less. And so, the complaint is, well, we didn't, the grass is getting too tall, or we didn't do this, and it looks messy, and it's because, yeah, we've cut back.
I mean, because, you know, Glenn Brook, you know, you get four or five inch high grass, you're playing, trying to play soccer, you know, and it's a bit of a showcase, you know, because all these people come here, and you're like, are you kidding me? We couldn't cut grass. To me, one thing that would be interesting is, what if we could, you know, these seasonal temps, what if they're like teenagers? You know, because teenagers can cut grass. I'd love to see kids in town actually get the experience of working, and it seems like they'd be hard, it would be cheaper. I mean, to me, you know, something like that would be a really interesting way of trying to address this.
I have a lot of familiarity with youth programs. They are great, but when you get into equipment, they get very restrictive. They can't use a lot of the mowing equipment. They can use weed ears and stuff like that, but they, the labor laws are very restrictive.
You can't, you can't mow?
No, a lot of the mowing equipment, they can't get anywhere near.
We don't use push mowers, we use their tractors.
Yeah, I guess what I'm wondering is, what if we, you know, it's like, you know, free agents, you know, like.
Which is a difference, what you can do at your home and what we can do though as an employer.
Right, but what if, what if they had like regular push mowers, you know, and, you know, maybe, maybe they could, maybe they don't have the best equipment, but they're willing to do it.
Depends on how young they are, Alex. I mean, the labor laws protect the children in there. If you've got 18 and 19-year-olds, they can like use anything. But if you're into the real youth program, which you're talking about, it's fairly restrictive on the equipment they can use.
I don't know, well, maybe things have changed, because I remember as a teenager, like mowing lawns at cemeteries and post offices.
I used to carry a sand gun with a seven-year-old, too, but they don't do that anymore. But I know, I add that for a comment other than a fact.
Yeah, yeah.
Because in the youth programs I had in DC, there was a lot of times that they were, they turned into more, I don't want to say babysitting services, but, well, we got the young kids, we couldn't do anything with them.
No, I get that, and that's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about, like, really doing work. Sort of like on a CCC model, you know, like.
Well, you got Youth Conservation Corps, and we don't participate here. I don't know why. Because there's a lot of, there's a lot of grants out there. Another program which we know is out there, and we don't seem to use any, is the personal release program.
Richard, a lot of fine work. Just a question about the concept of these funds is, to establish funds for this means we've got to raise money, you know, somehow. And so, we're saying, let's raise money to put it in a fund, so we need to raise less money. Why don't we just use the money we're raising to put in the fund to do the job and not, you know, I mean, if we're running along here and getting these things done, why would we increase it here so we can decrease it there?
We're not getting it done. We're not getting the field maintenance done.
We're not getting tennis court maintenance done? We're not getting the?
Oh, you're talking, you're talking about Item 13.
I'm just going down the list with all of these, all these funds, you know.
Well, you know, I don't think we're getting it done. And that's why.
Okay, then we have a different opinion. I mean, I will tell you that, that when the health fund was created, I thought it was unnecessary. I thought then, and I believe now, that Scantic Valley is our shock absorber, that that they have done a very good job at being a shock absorber. This year, the shock was a lot more, and they still absorbed a good deal of it, you know, and, and to have a belt being Scantic Valley and suspenders internally would require us to tax our, our residents to put money aside that we may or may not need as the suspenders on top of the belt Scantic Valley has. That's my opinion, I know that's apparently different from yours.
Yes, definitely.
And.
And it would, would be talking about having the schools contribute to the fund, too, which is something, we're, we're taking it all out of the operational, and that's why we had the operational hit.
So, so, when you take it out of the general government operations, where you take it out of the school department operations, both budgets right now, and have been for some year, that if you don't, if you take out money, and I don't care if it's ten thousand dollars only, something doesn't get done, this year. So what we're saying is, let's forego things this year to put money in a fund, so we can have suspenders on top of the belt of Scantic Valley. I'm, I'm only telling you, I think I understand what you're asking for, I'm just telling you why I disagree with this.
Okay.
Paul, what do you think on that?
Oh, he's back. We really talked for twenty minutes, that's terrible.
I spent two towns.
Yeah, you must know where the police are tonight.
Or where they're not.
Yeah.
You're talking about number ten, I'm assuming?
Yes.
Right.
Um, I guess to create a fund for the health insurance costs, to fund on a monthly basis on unexpended money from the health insurance allocation, we would not be able to accomplish that. When, when it was set up years ago, the, the stabilization fund, one of the ways that it was going to be, thought to be funded was, in the excess appropriations that year in, would be closed out to the stabilization fund, that was not allowed by the Department of Revenue. We can't make that transfer from, from the health insurance account, an operating type of, of account, into something else, without going to town meeting.
Okay, so all the money that's left over.
It's closed out into the general fund.
It just rolls into the general fund, we can't use it.
We could subsequently take it out, because it'll roll into free cash, we could subsequently take it out of free cash and put it into that type of fund. But we can't do it as, as presented here in that regard. You know, again, to have it as a buffer, I think, as Mark said, you know, there's suspenders in a belt, you know, are we going too far? We, we currently do have what's known as the Claims Trust Fund, where we basically, it came through the premium holidays a few years back from Scantic Valley, there's only about a quarter of a million dollars in it, and what we've been doing, withdrawing on that, is subsidizing the rates that Scantic Valley has given us by one percent. We were able to do that probably only for about two or three more years, and then that fund will be dry, too, but we are, we have continuously done that since that time that they gave us the premium holiday, and we'll continue to do that until basically that fund is dry, which is probably.
So there is now a fund of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
I believe, I, it's roughly that amount, yes.
Oh, wow. And so we, it's, it's not really a true trust, we could have used it to subsidize our costs more, so when you're.
It's not going to get you too far, but it's a little bit, but it has to be used not only for the, the one, the one percent subsidy also goes to the employee.
And employees, right.
Employees and the employer's share, because it's really both parties' money in that trust.
Oh, it is, okay.
Yes, it is.
Okay, you want to withdraw number ten now?
No, I'm not withdrawing any of my, this is just the beginning of the discussion.
She's not proposing any of them.
I'm not proposing any of them.
But I mean, based on what he just said.
No, I'm going to still think about it, I'm not withdrawing anything. I very well could withdraw half of these, but I've just.
Okay, well, okay, I just thought, because it sounded like he said that we couldn't do this.
Just a good discussion to have at nine thirty on a Wednesday night, because we haven't been very much.
You did say we couldn't do this?
Could I do this in the way that is proposed?
It can't, we can't do the thing with a monthly basis of unexpended money from the health insurance allocation, yeah.
Can't do as proposed, okay.
Are you done here, Marie?
I'm done, that was it. I wasn't expecting to go over these, this was a bunch of ideas to, to get everyone to think, and then as we, I figured we'd be talking about them on Thursday.
Well, see, we've saved a lot of chat time, though, because you've introduced them, and we already have some interaction.
That's true.
We've got some input from Paul.
Yeah.
Mr. Gold, are you ready?
I am, I have, I just want to comment on a couple of items of, of a budgetary nature that, that concerned me, and one we talked about tonight, which is the quarterly tax bill mailings, it's two, two thousand dollars, and there's been a ton of rumbling about that over the years, that we're mailing it two out at once, and people missing it, and I think, I'd love to see that re, put back in. I also still believe that we ought to put in another police vehicle, because you look at the aging, we're, we're in deep trouble, but that's, as they say, that, but that's not why I came here tonight, to talk about the individual budget items, I think we will. I was trying to think of a framework for coming to a resolution, and I want to put something out in general terms this evening, Janet, I'm glad you're here tonight, because hopefully we can answer your questions if it's totally unclear, but one of the things that I've heard several times in the last week and a half or two weeks, even when the, the school committee members have been sitting in the audience, was that the, the disagreement in money, whatever that is, is likely to come down to, do we implement the select board's policies on tax increase at two point two-five percent, not two and a half, a full increase in a half a percent of capital, and the full increase in OPEB? With the thought that, for the most part, at least, that's kind of where we were. And so one of the things I was thinking about was, and, and I'm kind of calling this a shared risk, shared reward potential opportunity, which is, take our budget, Paul, listen to this one, because you're going to love it, and split our budget warrant article into two warrant articles. And the first warrant article would be pretty much boilerplate stuff, the baseline of the schools, the base, a lot of the stuff of the, of the, of the town, the non-controversial items, even last year's funding level, I would like to see in there, of capital and OPEB, for example. Then have a second warrant article, and the second warrant article would say, raise and appropriate, because that's how we started off, whatever the number is, it turns out, and the money can be used as follows, to fund capital, additional funding for capital planning, or for, for capital projects, additional funding into OPEB, and additional funding to the school department, with the hope that they'll use it for all-day kindergarten, knowing that final line item is all we get to say, and distribution is absolutely up to the school department. But the warrant article would also say, in any funds that are awarded by the state over two million nine hundred and sixty-five thousand one hundred and sixty-six dollars.
And that figure represents what?
For chapter seventy, that's just the number we put into our budget of an assumed number. So, the school committee used that number, the town's general government used that number, we have no exact knowledge whether that's going to be, but the, the warrant would say, any money over that, okay, would increase the allocation to the OPEB fund and the capital funds from raise and appropriate, by that amount of money, and the remainder would then still go into the school budget. The intent being that the school budget is left whole, that, that they're, we're essentially saying, we're going to share with the schools some of the opportunity to, because free full-day kindergarten is a priority, that's been identified, but the school department's saying, and if for some reason this town comes in with more chapter seventy money than we've budgeted for, we're going to let that go through this mechanism, back into capital and OPEB. And then while I'm at it, I'd probably go back to the original warrant article, which is the town, general warrant article, and say, any state cherry fund revenue above five million seven hundred and forty thousand eight sixty-six would be used to reduce our tax rate below, or reduce the raise and appropriate amount, dollar for dollar. And then that option would potentially, if we missed wrong with the state aid, allow the, the select board to implement a, a town tax rate below the full two and a half percent. Now, the impact of this is pretty significant a year from when we adopt this, when all of a sudden, we don't have any free cash at all, because we didn't, you know, tax to this level, and get a little bit extra state aid, which has always been that extra revenue. But in fact, the, the result is, we may end up with a lower than two and a half percent tax rate, we may end up with being able to fund full all-day, free all-day kindergarten, and we may be able to fund OPEB and capital above what's currently in the, what I'll call the February third budget.
But what was the difference last year?
The difference in what?
Okay, so, you're talking about.
The difference in what, Marie?
Okay, you were talking about the difference, let's say, this chapter seventies. No, I'm talking about the, you're talking about two different funding, one is the cherry seeds for the local, so you're saying, well, this could be a bonanza, but what was it last year between town meeting year and?
Well, it just so happens that we have that in here.
I figured you had that.
So, well, it's, it's in our overview, it's the difference between the budget and the, and, and the actual, right?
And we're talking schools and town. So, what was it with the town, and what was it with the schools?
State aid, we budgeted at five million five hundred and twelve thousand, I'm on the, the vertical one here, Alex, page one.
Right, what line?
So, we budgeted five million five hundred and twelve thousand, the state came through with five million six twenty-nine.
Can you tell me the line?
So it's about a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars that the state got, which we would, under this wild proposal I'm throwing out there, would be a reduction in taxes by that amount.
Okay.
Okay, and the school's special revenue was budgeted two million two fifteen, excuse me, three million two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in, at the town meeting, and the state actually distributed three million five hundred and fifty-two thousand, which is a difference of three hundred and, what, thirty-seven thousand dollars, something like that, increase. And, and in my wild crazy proposal, that not, that three thirty-seven would partially go, and we can write the warrant article any way we want.
Which three thirty, I see three twenty-four.
The difference between, the difference between three million five tw, two, excuse me, three million two fifteen eight ninety-one, and three million five fifty-two two forty-three, Alex.
Which line are you on?
It's line four of the, of the budget summary of the revenue.
Wait a minute, I've got three million five fifty-two, and then?
That's, but go to the left of that.
Okay, three, two, point two.
At the town meeting last year.
Yeah.
We came in and appropriated it based on three million two fifteen.
Yeah.
But by, I'm going to just say August, because the state's slow, but by August, the state actually said, no, you're really going to get three million five fifty-two.
Right.
And that's what came in. And now, Marie, I could be, I mean, the state could come back and say, you know, you're planning on having, you know, you're, you're planning on having three million, or, two million nine hundred and sixty-five thousand oh seventy-five, we're only going to give you two point oh million, now we're really in trouble, because we're short, and, and clearly that's a big risk everybody takes, but that's a risk we take anyway.
What you're, you, what you're saying then is, don't fund the policies, let the state, the throwing of the dice of the state decide if the policies are going to be funded.
What I'm saying is, consider having our cake and eating it, too, by being able to pass warrant articles that allow us to take advantage of this, I mean, take advantage of different funding from the state that is in our very conservative budget. Meanwhile, we will be passing a balanced budget. I mean, we need to pass a balanced budget, we will, and all it says is that if revenue comes in higher than we thought, in one case, we reduce the taxes, in the other case, we essentially trade dollar for dollar to be able to fund OPEB and, and, and capital projects. It is a roll of dice, but when you look at what we need to do, and what the gap is, this may be a pretty painless way of doing it, Marie, it's, it's a risk.
But Mark.
But there's a reward, and it's shared risk by the schools and us.
Of course, the problem with, you know, taking him at the kindergarten, is that if we don't do it, we'd lose the hundred thousand dollar payback, so we get.
No, 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 but.
He's saying to do it.
I'm saying, we fund full all-day kindergarten, it's just a matter, or, or I shouldn't say, we don't do anything, we provide enough funds so that the school committee could provide free full all-day kindergarten, but where that money comes from, right now, is either raise and appropriate, or it will come from the additional state aid that may come.
Right, but, but there's a contingency.
No, the, the way I see it, Alex and Janet, I hope you don't mind me putting words in the, we can't control, I mean, we can give the school department, school department, school committee, a hundred million dollars, and they're going to say, we don't want to fund X and, there's nothing you can do.
I understand that.
You can't appropriate money contingent upon what they spend it for.
No.
But if they're saying, we need this much money on our bottom line, and we say, you got it, we just don't know yet where it's coming from, it's either coming from raise and appropriate, but if more money comes in from the state aid, that's really where it's coming from.
The, the way I understand it, but let's say, it, it doesn't come in, then you don't have.
No, if the state aid doesn't come in, it'll hire than we, than we.
Yeah.
But then it comes out of the capital and OPEB.
Then in other words, we don't fund capital and OPEB this year.
At expended level, we go back to the.
So Mark's saying, even though he says he was upset that we were doing any cuts this year, he's basically saying, throw the dice, and we won't fund at all this year, depending if, unless they get.
And that's our risk, and the school department, school committee's risk, is, they get all this additional extra money from the state, and at least some part of it, however we structure this, is going to go back to OPEB and to, and to capital planning. In, in fact, what it will do, it doesn't go back there, it reduces the amount they get to, from raise and appropriate, dollar for dollar. Janet, do you understand what I'm?
I understand what you're saying.
So, so, you know, and I'm not asking you to agree with it, I, you know, at all, I'm just saying, so our risk is, we may lose money in OPEB and capital, the school department's risk is, they may lose excess money that comes from the state. Our gain is, we may get everything we want, OPEB, capital, and reduced tax rate, and their gain is, they get free full all-day kindergarten.
You're not going to get, you're not going to get the capital, because you're going to be delaying it a year, because if you don't have the money, you can't go ahead and.
No, but the, but the money comes in on, on Ju, July first.
Yeah, but I know, but you're, you're, you're having your spring town meetings already come and gone.
They've already appropriated all those funds. I, I need to sit there and think carefully on how this is going to work, because I think it's.
Takes us out of cycle by a year.
I'll just, adjust a portion of the money, remember, the bulk of it is, was in article.
I don't know, I really don't know how much.
Well, my, my proposal is, we put last year's level, at least, and, and it's only the increases that we're looking for that we put at risk.
No, you're talking about more, because, but if you're talking about fully funding it, the hundred and fifty, he's already taken us down to the level of last year. So, that's why I need time to look at the numbers, because I, I, I'm not sure if we're going to be where we need to be.
Could you write this up?
I got it written out, I, I tried to put numbers on it, but I'll, yeah, I'll be glad to do that.
I mean, it's.
But I'd rather have Paul interpret what I said and give you folks.
I'm taking.
Do you understand what I'm saying? Is it even legal?
Uh, yeah, some, yes, some no.
Okay, well.
I, I'm taking three different concepts out of what you said. The first would be to have a base level budget, and then have a second budget article with some of the additions to the base level budget. Am I correct?
Hmm.
I, I don't see, I don't see things like the two thousand dollars for taxing, for, for mailing being in the secondary budget.
But you would have potential, let's say, kindergarten in the, in the second article, the second budget article?
No, he's talking about that in the primary.
It's just money to the schools, that's.
Right, it's just money to the schools, but, okay, I mean, that's fine.
So the second article would contain money to the schools, I would see the second article as saying.
Right.
Capital OPEB and money to the schools.
I mean, I, I personally like the idea, because then it eliminates all the amendments that can be made, and changes in the motions and everything like that. It would say, here's the baseline, we'll get to the extra money, and we can start talking about the extra money separately, instead of amending a budget downward, upward, sideways, or, or whatever. So I like that part of it. I'm going to jump to the last part, where you talked about the three point two million to the three point five million. Those are the school's special revenues. Town meeting has no authority over those school's special revenues.
Right.
The school committee has, so if they, if they get extra money, it's theirs.
But we can't write an article that says, if special revenue is higher, the amount we raise and appropriate, where I'm just, I'm not trying to control what they do with the special revenue, I'm just saying, we're going to, we're going to raise and appropriate this much money, that's going to go here, here, and here, and oh, by the way, the amount that goes to this third bucket, it looks at what the special revenue is and adjusts it accordingly. The special revenue clearly goes to the school department, without any interference, any, any slowdown by the town.
But, but, which, which, which you're, what you, I mean, town meeting has no authority of that, the school committee has complete authority over, over that money.
And I'm, I'm saying, they have, they have complete authority over all the money.
But if all of a sudden they get two dollars more in circuit breaker, they, they, they don't have to revise their budget, and you're saying, town meeting will take that two extra dollars?
No, I'm saying, that town meeting will have passed a, a warrant article that says, if they get two more dollars, that means they get two less dollars from the raise and appropriate.
Again, all that is under the control of the school committee, and town meeting has no authority of that, in my opinion.
Well, wait a minute.
And if it's awarded? If, if, if it's awarded, they need a statute to say, without further appropriation, the school committee has authority to expend it without further appropriation.
I'm not asking them to, I, I don't think you understand what I'm saying, the, the, the special revenue isn't in the warrant, the only thing in the warrant is the raise and appropriate amount.
But you're asking them to, to make changes to their budget, yeah.
No, no, I'm not asking them to raise, make any changes in their budget.
Because you're telling them they're going to fund our OPEB.
No, what I'm saying, no, they're not going to fund the OPEB, the raise and appropriate funds are OPEB. So the raise and appropriate goes to three buckets, OPEB, capital, and schools. How that changes depends upon what comes in from the state, but where, what comes into the state goes directly to the schools, but it impacts the decision of the town, of, of the town meeting.
You have two amounts that come in from the state, one are known as the special revenues, which the school department has complete control over.
Right.
The other amount is the chapter seventy money, which is, they call it general fund money, they have really no control over it. When you, and, and if I, if I understood your, this would be the second concept that you mentioned, that you would write kind of a, any amount that comes in, in excess of chapter seventy money, or any other line item on the cherry sheet, it could come in from the lottery line, the undistributed money, that you are going to allocate that line, the undistributed money, that you are going to allocate that money in a certain fashion.
No, the way I understood...
No.
It's gonna have the schools...
No, I'm not gonna allocate that in a certain fashion.
Okay, so what you said, then, okay, that amount of money is gonna go to reduce the tax rate?
No, he's saying that it will reduce what we're gonna give the schools.
Out of the general fund.
Yeah.
Right, no.
So he's gonna change post-town meeting what we're giving the schools.
There's a raise and appropriate, okay, for the base budget. Now, we're gonna have another raise and appropriate for part two.
The budget amendments, let's say.
Whatever, okay.
Yeah.
And it's gonna say something like, raise and appropriate, let's just pick a number, because I don't know what they are gonna be, you know, $5 million, okay? To be spent as follows, okay? You know, $1 million for capital stabilization, or capital, you know, project fund, $1 million for the OPEB fund, and $3 million to the school department. If, if special revenues come in over whatever's in the assumption, okay, for every, and actually, what the article should say is, $1 million for OPEB, $1 million for capital, and the remainder to go to the schools. And if you write it so that the remainder goes to the school, then you say, for any dollar over whatever we've got in our budget that comes into the schools through special revenues, it will increase 50 cents to the OPEB line and 50 cents to the capital line.
Again, any amount for special revenues going to the schools is under their control. Town meeting cannot dictate.
But we're not taking them out.
My recommendation is, why don't you write this down, Mark?
You're dictating what is under their control. Town meeting is trying to dictate how the school committee is gonna expend, what is rightfully theirs.
Mark, can I try? So, I think what he's talking about is the amount that, let's forget about the special, let's not even talk about the special revenue funds.
Chapter 70.
So, so let's, let's say, we have a warrant article that said, you know, this department, we want to say schools, "A department shall receive, will raise and appropriate $1,000 for this department upon the happening of some contingent future event." So let's say, you know, if it's sunny on September 1st, they get it, and if not, they don't.
Right.
I mean, to me, that's essentially what you're talking about, except the contingency is far more complicated. I mean, do you see any problem with that?
Yes, I do, right. I do not believe the Department of Revenue, if asked, of course, you can always not ask them. But if you ask them, that they would not, they would not want to have an open-ended amount.
Oh, I see, right.
They would not have an open-ended amount.
Okay, so what if you put a, what if you made it closed, open and closed?
Let's...
No, certainly, no, that's open-ended.
But, you know, it makes...
You'd have to be a specific amount, and then the question would be, the roll of the dice, does that money come in or doesn't come in? But then you'd have to go back to town meeting to amend it to what actually comes in. And I think that's what you wanna do.
Or you just do what the amount you need, and if anything more comes in, don't worry about it.
If anything more comes in, it stays in the general fund until further appropriated, or you don't raise taxes to that level.
You know, I think it's too complicated. I don't think it will survive on the floor. I think, you know, you might even find it illegal down the line. I think in the past, what's happened is, in negotiations with the schools, they do turnbacks every year, and we can talk to them about a turnback to OPEB. If you're talking about deferring an actual investment of our OPEB funds till the fall town meeting, so that we can squeeze out what we can this year, we've done that in the past. And we've done that through cooperation, working with the schools. If you're interested in something like this, I think you should write it down and hand it to us in writing, but, because there's lots of things that I'm a little concerned about.
I'll be glad to. I just believe that every year, for the last seven years that I've been here, we've ended up overtaxing the residents of Long Meadow, because we build our budget conservatively, and either state aid and/or special revenues come in above that, and we manage to spend that money. Sometimes during the year, and sometimes during the, at the end of the year, when we have it come over as free cash. And it seems to me, if one of our goals is to reduce our tax rates, if one of our goals is to be able to fund these other things, then maybe the way to do it is to tighten what we do relative to...
Or put a policy in. Put a policy on free cash.
You just, with that statement, you completely lost me. I'm lost completely, because we're talking about taxing people and having a conservative budget, and you feel like people in town are getting their fair share.
I didn't say they're not getting their fair share.
And then you're talking, well, you're saying that they're getting overtaxed.
They are.
We have a conservative budget, right? Okay, that part I understand. And then you say, money that comes from the state to reimburse schools or for the cherry sheet gets spent, and that's a problem. And I don't see how those two go together. I don't understand that.
Okay, so...
Help me figure it out.
Sure, I'll be glad to. You know, we have now, on May 11th, we're gonna go to the town, and we're gonna say, here's what we need to spend money for, and here's how much money we're gonna raise. And the school department goes to the town and says, here's what, how much, what we need to spend money for, and here's how much we're gonna have as revenue, okay? The fact is, the revenue always goes up. And instead of holding to our commitment to the residents of, this is what we're gonna spend, very often, we spend more because the revenue went up. And sometimes we don't, and it's left over at the end of the year. But in fact, if this is, and I'll use concrete numbers, if I said to you, Tom, I need to spend $5,000, can you tax $5,000? Say, fine, you know, here's the $5,000. And I say, great, I got $5,000. Now, all of a sudden, I get, not $5,000, I get $6,000, okay? You know, wouldn't you expect me to say, you know what, Tom, I don't really need all that money from you, I got an extra thousand from the state, because I can still run the town with what I said I could run the town for. But instead, we say, and the school department says, and I'm not, you know, everybody does this jointly, we just say, thank you very much for the extra money. Nobody goes back to the residents and say, you know, I didn't need as much out of your tax rate, because I got a little bit more from the state. That's what I meant by saying we overtaxed them. Now, we use the money. The money isn't, there's no fraud, there's no graft, there's no, you know, we use the money, and we use it a year later, generally, because it comes around in free cash. The point was, though, if you're signing a contract with the residents that say, for this amount of money, we can run the state, and we're gonna get it, we can run the town of Long Meadow, and we're gonna get it from a couple of sources, and one's the sort, one's the state, and the other is the, is your tax rate. If we really believe that that's what it takes to run the town, if the state money goes up, why isn't the tax rate ever going down?
For the simple reason that our budgets aren't flush, they're not budgeted at full.
Because everyone's cutting programs.
Every divisional chief has mentioned deficiencies that they have. We've all, and I don't want the taxpayers to think that we're purposely spending their money, because we have millions of dollars worth of needs if we had the money here.
I'm not arguing that, Richard. You're absolutely right. The point is, though, you know, I feel like, you know, the select board and the town government, you know, makes an agreement with the residents, that, you know, if you give us, in this case, if you give us $66,881,722, we'll run the town next year. And in fact, that $66,881,722 is, we're saying, can you give us, out of your tax revenue, $48,944,037, we're gonna get the rest elsewhere, okay? If what we get elsewhere is up, why aren't we saying, you know, you don't need to give us $48,944? You can give us $48,944.
And the matter, then, is the policy is put in place, that if we do make more money, the schools, everything, the schools do turnbacks to us, and instead of just spending the money in the fall, we should have a policy that some of the money goes back into the tax rate and decrease the tax rate.
So not to pick on anybody, and I'm not picking on anybody, then if that's the case, then the school turnback at the end of this year ought to be the difference between what we originally budgeted for school special revenue and what actually came in on state special revenue. And I suspect that's not gonna happen. Similarly, the town side, the general government turnback ought to be the difference between what we budgeted for state aid and the actual was. I suspect that's not gonna happen either, for a variety of reasons.
CFO wants to speak. Yeah, I just wanna say, the reason why we may get extra, you know, we do get extra money, and, because maybe we are conservative with some of the estimates. But we make a commitment and sign an agreement, we set our tax rate in November or December. We don't know, on June 30th, we're gonna get that extra money. So to say that we're overtaxing them, I mean, we're taking our best guess in November of what's gonna happen eight months later.
And I've clearly been a part of it for seven years, Paul. I absolutely agree with you. And I encourage you for what you do here, in terms of making it conservative, because the last thing you wanna do is go back to them and say, oh, remember, we needed 47 million from you? We actually need 48 and a half million. That's the worst thing you could do. So, you know, and I get it, but...
But you know what? I think the plan is, what is the goal? What are you trying to fix here? And my concern is, the bottom line goal is, you're trying to find some way of tying up the extra Chapter 70 funds, circuit breaker.
No, no, what I'm trying to do is share the responsibility, share the risk, and share the reward of being able to have our cake and eat it too.
And I think the best thing of doing that is negotiations and discussions throughout the year on how we solve our mutual problems. I don't think you're gonna tie that up in town meeting, and in some ways, I think it's suggesting that we need to do it in town meeting, when I think the two boards work cooperatively together on it.
This is the first outside-the-box comment we think we've had.
No, that's fine, and I think that it's important that...
We don't do that.
The insurance, I mean, the, what he called, the whole thing about the fall tax rate, I think is something we've been ignoring for years. Because as Paul says, we set the rate in November, but we have the free cash in the month before that, which we could use to keep the tax rate down.
Alex needs to get a point.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, I was just gonna make a point, Mark, as you were saying, like, the turnback ought to be the difference between the original budgeted amount and what it turned out to be. I mean, part of the problem, and this is kind of a more general point, to my mind, the school services, it's a much more dynamic thing, and that's part of the reason why they have more ability to transfer money between line items. I mean, like, one of the things that I followed pretty closely last spring was the whole redistricting thing. There were, I mean, they went over it, they thought they were gonna have a certain number of kids, and how many classes they were gonna have at the different schools, and then, lo and behold, there was like significantly more. And one of the things that they needed to do, so that you didn't have, I don't know, 23, 25 kids in a kindergarten classroom, which is, you know, not good education, they had to add a section. They didn't think that, I mean, so there's that dynamism that exists within the school department. You know, did they know that that many kids were gonna walk in and be in kindergarten come fall? They didn't know that. And so, whereas I see on the town side, I think what we're doing is much more stable. You know, like, we were just talking about the library. You know, it's pretty, you know, what they're doing this year is gonna be pretty darn close to what they do next year. You know, they're dealing with so many changes. You know, like, kindergarten is just one of them. You know, they're having to do common core standards, you know, again, like, again, comparing to the library, you know, I don't see that kind of dynamism occurring, you know, so, you know, to me, like, it's not a failure of foresight, it's just what they are inherently dealing with.
And I hear you, Alex. And I guess my final comment would be that, that your comments are probably well-taken of what the schools are dealing with, but the process that I was trying to lay out here, which may or may not ever work, and this may be the last we hear about it, was to take, and here's the number, 99.98% of the school's budget and guarantee it to them, and take the .02% and say to them, that's at risk. And take, I think the numbers are like 95% of the town budget, only because our budget's smaller, and we're putting a little bit more at risk. So I'm not asking anybody to risk the farm here. We're saying it's a marginal risk. It guarantees free full-day kindergarten, which everybody seems to want, or, you know, whether I agree with it or not, and how many people are affected by it or impacted by it or not. And, but it doesn't say, we're gonna cut the policies of the school, of the select board, by saying, all we're gonna get is last year's capital, all we're gonna get is last year's OPEB, and, you know, and to me, that's a, that's a real shame, because I truly believe that, that if we don't start doing something more with OPEB, we're gonna be in deep trouble.
Well, I'd like to see it in writing, number one. Number two is, I'd like to look at the numbers, because I think, any way you look at it, there's no way the OPEB is going to be fully funded, whether, if you're waiting for the other funds to come through. But let's write it down, and we can discuss it on the Thursday meeting.
Well, we wanna do even more than that. You wanna get it written down and get it into the town manager and Paul, because I want, they need to come back and tell us whether it's legal.
Right, I think we'd have council look at it, too. No, that's fine, absolutely. I mean, I'm, you know, I haven't spent hours and hours and hours on this, but...
Yeah, well, we'd wanna get you guys involved in it, too.
Well, I wouldn't get the schools involved until we know if it's legal.
Yeah, let's see.
I'm not sure if we're voting on it.
No, we're not, I'm voting on it, but...
I understand.
But, but again, you know, rather than sit in a room and say, yours are, it's win or lose, this is the only thing that's not a win-lose agreement, because the pie's only so big, Marie. And for every dollar general government gets, the schools are gonna get less, and for every dollar the schools get, the general government gets less. The pie's not getting any bigger, folks. And this was a way of saying, well, if the pie does get bigger, right, if the pie does get bigger, we're able to take advantage of it. That's exactly right, Alex.
When it comes to the in-year example, you said about 5% of the non-school budget, that we would budget at 95%. Is that...
Well, I don't know what the...
Just use that as an example. You know, so if we don't, so we, at that 95%, the big question is, where do we take the 5% out of? What line item?
As an if?
Well, if we are budgeting at 95%, what line items do we take that other 5% out of?
Well, in my, in my plan, okay, the first part of that, from the raise and appropriate, 95% is in part A.
Right.
Part B contains some of that 9, some of that 5% in the guarantee. It's just a matter of how much you get back, depending upon the others. So let's look through the numbers, Paul. I'm not quite...
I mean, this, I think this is where we really need to see it.
Yeah, we need to go through numbers. I understand it, but from a conceptual point of view, I just thought it was a way of, first of all, getting town floor to focus on the issue, instead of on, you know, parks and rec, and the adult center, and the fire, police department, and that, that kind of stuff, unless we believe that those are the variables, and then we move those over. But for the most part, I keep hearing the variables are OPEB and capital. Now, if, Marie, you've got a list here, and it turns out that, you know, the crosswalk program, or the whatever become additional variables, we maybe look at those as well. As fast as you can, Janet. That's what I'm doing.
I'm sorry, I thought there was, I thought there was gonna get some two-way going, but I don't blame you.
No, I have good thanks.
But you're close, we can drag you back up.
Anyway, I've said my thoughts, and I just, and if that's no good, I would just encourage people, whether they're on the select board, school committee, or from the general public, to come up with a better way of coming to a resolution, so that we don't end up with a win-lose.
Well, we, yeah, we tried getting to reducing the tax rate this year, and that, how'd that work, huh, right? Okay.
Well, it's still sitting there.
Yeah, it's still sitting. Tom, do you have anything you wanna add?
No.
Okay. I mean, did you have anything that you wanna modify the budget for?
Well, I'm gonna work on a list of some priorities. I think that sounds like a good idea. I hadn't done that.
Okay, okay. Alex?
Someone.
Okay. We've got, what, what we said earlier, two more, two more actual budget meetings?
Monday, Wednesday.
And then we're gonna have the forum, the public forum, and then we're gonna vote.
Wait a minute, we're having the 14th, 16th, the forum is the 17th.
Are we having a meeting after the forum?
21st, yeah.
Okay, so it's a regular scheduled meeting?
Yeah, a regular scheduled meeting, and I would hope by that time that the debate is pretty well over, unless something comes up at public meet, uh, to public forum. So we've got two more meetings to get this cranked down, and for everybody to get their thoughts in and get them on the table. And I would suggest that we get them on the table pretty quick now, because we're running out of time.
Yeah, I need time to really look at stuff, too. I need to have it ahead of time.
Right, and you're gonna miss next meeting, so if anything's gonna be presented now, guys, you need to get it drafted up, so we can send a copy to Marie, too, so there's enough substance to it, without having to watch the whole tape, hopefully. Okay, do we have anything else we wanna talk about tonight?
About the same stuff more?
Yeah, yeah. Paul, do you have anything?
Uh, no, I won't say.
Okay, Janet, do you have anything to add for the common good?